Good evening and welcome to the July twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Fayetteville Planning Commission. This meeting is being held both in person and virtually for applicants and members of the public. I'm Commissioner Johnson, Vice Chair of the Fayetteville Planning Commission. I'm standing in for Commissioner Sparkman this evening. I'm present in the council chambers with members of the Fayetteville Planning Commission, city staff, and representatives from Fayetteville's Media Services Department. Commissioners, members of the public, project applicants, and some staff are participating either here in person or remotely via Zoom. The voices you may hear during this meeting are all being recorded for public record and piped into the council chambers. Participation remains of utmost importance to the city of Fayetteville, and we provide in many ways to participate in or view tonight's planning commission meeting. Those include calling and speaking with planning division staff prior to the meeting, emailing planning division prior to the meeting, viewing through the city's website, including on Fayetteville's online government channel and through Fayetteville's YouTube channel, call in tonight through Zoom conferencing by phone, smartphone, tablet, or computer, and then of which instructions will be on the screen momentarily. And you can also attend tonight's meeting in person. And please be aware that while it may not appear to you that your attendance and interest in speaking are visible, staff can view when participants have joined the meeting and when they have raised their virtual hand. We ask that you refrain from doing this until the public comment portion of the item of which you wish to comment on. I'll provide a longer than usual period of time for virtual attendees to raise their hands or in-person attendees to enter the chambers. When recognized, please state your name and address for the record. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to comment per item, which staff will help me monitor. Additionally, as a matter of etiquette, will staff and commissioners please meet their microphones when not speaking, as this can be disruptive to the the recording devices. So with that, Ms. Masters, when you're ready, will you please call the roll?
Sparkman. Johnson.
Present.
Garlock.
Here.
Madden. Holcomb.
Here.
Brink.
Here.
McGetrick. Here. Winston.
Here.
Canada.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Masters. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the consent agenda. We have four items on tonight's consent agenda. The first is approval of the minutes from July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two planning commission meeting. The second is VAR two thousand and twenty-two zeros thirty-eight. It's a variance submitted by Allen Reed and Associates for property located at four eight six three South Daryl Road. The property is in the Fayetteville Planning area and contains approximately two hundred and one acres. The request is for a variance to street frontage requirements due to a proposed lot split. VAR two thousand and twenty-two zeros forty. It's a variance submitted by Flowers Consulting for property located at two four five East Rock Street. Property is owned residential multifamily, twenty twenty-four units per acre. It contains approximately point three six acres. The request is for a flood zone variance. Our last item on consent is LSD two thousand and twenty-two zeros twenty-two. It's a large-scale development submitted by Engineering Services for property located at two eight oh one West McMillan Drive. The property is owned P one institutional and contains approximately twelve point one three acres. The request is for a fifteen thousand one hundred square foot building expansion. And with that, I'll turn over the commission. Commissioners, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Brink.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Alright, so we have a motion to approve the consent agenda from Commissioner Brink and a second from Commissioner Winston. Ms. Masters, when you're ready, will you please call the roll or the vote?
Johnson.
Yes.
Garlock.
Yes.
Holcomb.
Yes.
Brink.
Yes.
McGetrick.
Yes.
Winston.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Motion to approve carries.
Thank you, Ms. Masters. Moving on to unfinished business. Our only item of unfinished business tonight is RZN two thousand and twenty-two zeros twenty-seven. It's a rezoning submitted by Bauer Verde for property located at six oh three North Walnut Avenue. The property is owned RSF four residential, single-family, four units per acre and contains approximately point six nine acres. The request is to rezone the property to RSF eight residential, single-family, eight units per acre, and Mr. Umberger has an update on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a presentation ready, but I will not be presenting that unless it is requested by you and the rest of the commission. So this this item was heard at the July eleventh Planning Commission meeting. And it was voted to be tabled at that meeting to receive feedback from the floodplain administrator, Alan Pugh. We did not receive any revisions to this application, but we did receive a request to table the item from the applicant. They requested for the item to be tabled until the August eighth Planning Commission meeting. I can stand for any questions that you've got.
Thank you, Mr. Umberger. And for clarification, this was posted before the final agenda went out or was posted on the final agenda?
On the final agenda, correct.
Thank you, sir. Next, we will hear from the applicant if the applicant is here to speak to this item. Alright, seeing none. We we will not be hearing public comment tonight since applicant did request a table to the August eighth committee. I know some of you are probably here to speak to this item. We apologize for that. Typically, when there is requested table before the final agenda goes off, we this body is typically honored that. And so as a matter of procedural, we usually just move to table instead of hearing public comment. So with that, I will turn it over to the commission. Commissioners.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Winston.
I'll move the table to the August eighth meeting.
Commissioner Canada, second.
Alright, I have a motion from Commissioner Winston to table RZN two thousand and twenty-two zeros twenty-seven to the August eighth Planning Commission meeting with a second from Commissioner Canada. If there's no additional comments, Ms. Masters, will you please call the vote?
Johnson.
Yes.
Garlock.
Yes.
Holcomb.
Yes.
Brink.
Yes.
McGetrick.
Yes.
Winston.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Motion to table carries.
I have arrived late. I apologize, but I would vote yes. This is Mary Madden, Commissioner.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner Madden. We'll now move on to new business. Our first item of new business is VAR two thousand and twenty-two zeros twenty-five. It's a variance submitted by We Build Decks for property located at sixteen seventy-nine South Cooper's Cove. The property is owned RSF four residential, single-family, four units per acre and contains approximately point three one acres. The request is for a variance allowing at least twelve feet closer to the stream side. And our city floodplain engineer, Mr. Pugh, will be handling this one.
Sure. Thank you, members of the commission. This one is a request for an additional twelve feet of encroachment. If you'll see in the memo, the original home was built under a variance. It's not dissimilar to some other variances that we've granted in the past in the same subdivision. The only difference was originally the footprint of the home was basically accepted as the streamside protection zone, or that plan was accepted as the variance, if that makes sense. So they did not have any other leeway as far as additional encroachment without coming back to this body. For example, some of the other residences in this subdivision were as close as seven and a half to ten feet to the edge of the water, which we're indicating is the top of the bank based on what we've determined historically as far as these variances go. So staff felt it wasn't keeping with with other variances that have been approved in this area. The only other thing that I would note was there is an open violation on this particular property. There was some work happening much closer to the stream that the owner has been notified that cannot take place unless he comes back to request a variance. We have informed him that most likely staff would not be in support of that variance. And some of that work does appear to be within the right of way. So this variance itself, if you've been out there, would not include that work. It would include only the deck coming off of the back of the home. Happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Pugh. We'll call on you if we have any additional questions. Next, we'll hear from the applicant. Is the applicant here to speak to this item? If you would, please state your name and anything else you'd like us to know.
Sure. My name is Vance Brock. I'm the homeowner. Thank you for Allen to do his great work on the the deck part. The other part, I stopped everything. That we were trying to down by the stream area, it was basically a snake pit. And like, I don't know if anybody's had a dog get bit at eight o'clock on a Saturday, but it's a cheap vet bill. So we killed all the weeds. Basically, it was a it was like a, I can't even imagine, like the landscaping guy told me exactly what the word to say, but you know, unfortunately, I can't remember that. But it was a very invasive weed that was coming into there that was coming. We just cleared that out, and now it's all growing back. The the violation is for doing anything on a hundred-year floodplain, which if you go fifteen feet on the other side of from my house to the other side of the bridge, the golf course is not included in that because they have political power and I don't. So all I was doing is trying to beautify my property and make it so that all the water that flows down our area, the road curves, and it rolls right through my yard. And it basically pushes all my dirt into the stream line, which starts the beginning of this whole pond system that is there. And basically, we had all of the pond, you could walk from my property to my neighbor's property without having to touch water. And we just dug that out and pulled it back up and put rocks down to try to make it so that my property wouldn't end up filling in the plain. And that's what the the violation is about that and also about we were going to put a fire pit down there because it was actually nice, but okay, so we stopped that. But basically, that's all I did was try to control the water that's coming off the road that pitches to me, flow down, go through still my property, but instead of taking out all my property, has to run through all these bigger rocks to end up in the same place it was going to start at in the first place without destroying all my property. And that's basically where we're at. But what we're here today for is for the deck, which I've been waiting since February, and my wood has been waiting since March. But apparently, my builders didn't have the knowledge to be able to fill out the paperwork correctly. So here I am. But thank you, City Council, and I appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you. We'll call on you if we have any additional questions. Next, we'll hear from the public. Committee members of the public have called in to speak to this item or here in person to speak to this item. We ask that you come up to the podium or raise your virtual hand by pressing the star nine button or raise hand button. Seeing no one online or in person, I'll turn it over to the commission. Commissioners.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Canada.
This seems pretty straightforward. I'm comfortable with staff's recommendations and conditions, and I move to approve VAR two thousand and twenty-two zeros twenty-five with conditions determining with all conditions recommended by staff.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that motion.
Alright, thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Canada with a second from Commissioner Winston. Do we have any comments before we go to the vote? Commissioner Garlock.
Please. What are the fines in place for the future? It's not just one thing to rip up the Riparian area, but I'm sure there's fertilizers and things coming from your land down. If Mr. Pugh could explain what potential fines if continued violations happen, I'd just be curious of that. I agree with Commissioner Canada that this was in place and prior to the streamside protection ordinance of two thousand and eleven, but I do have concerns about protecting our watershed, and I'd like to hear what he has to say about future violations, how they will be monitored, and more importantly, how they'd be fined. Thank you.
Sure. Generally, our process, as laid out in the code for these types of violations, are to give the applicant an opportunity to address those violations and correct those violations with a reasonable amount of time to do that. If nothing is done or if the violation continues, then we would turn that violation over to the prosecuting attorney, and they would take that essentially to court, and the court would set any fine or or under issue other penalty, if you will, that would go along with that particular violation, I believe. And I could be wrong. It was it was in the up to two hundred and fifty dollars a day category for every day that the violation exists. We we rarely, I would say, get to that scenario in these types of violations and even floodplain violations more often than not. We can work with the with the landowners and get that violation cleared before we get to that point, which we certainly hope is the case here.
Thank you. Seeing no additional comments, Ms. Masters, will you please call the vote?
Johnson.
Yes.
Garlock.
Yes.
Madden.
Yes.
Holcomb.
Yes.
Brink.
Yes.
McGetrick.
Yes.
Winston.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Motion to approve carries.
Thank you, Ms. Masters. Our next item of new business is ADM two thousand and twenty-two zeros thirty-eight. It's an administrative item submitted by Engineering Services for property located at twenty-two hundred South Industrial Drive. The properties are zone I one general industrial and contain approximately twelve point seven one acres total. The request is to amend LSD two thousand and twenty-two zeros four by removing requirement for MSP improvements, which is the sidewalk in vicinity of Tree Grove along Pump Station Road. And Ms. Masters has her staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the item before you today, the commission has seen before. But I'll give a little bit of background on it for you. So the subject property in this case is in southeast Fayetteville. It's at the southeast corner of South Industrial Drive and East Pump Station Road. It's about four tenths of a mile east of South City Lake Road. The property is zone I two general industrial and is the current site of Marshalltown Tools and Industrial Use. The St. Paul Trail borders the property to the south. A large-scale development for a forty-eight thousand square foot expansion was approved in March of two thousand and twenty-two under LSD two thousand and twenty-two zeros four. With that large-scale development, the applicant requested a variance to the street improvement requirements that was ultimately denied by this body. So the proposal before you today, the applicant is requesting to amend a condition of approval from the associated large-scale development that six-foot sidewalks be built to the master street plan standards along East Pump Station Road. The applicant asserts that there is a steep grade and an existing grove of pine trees that make the completion of that trail difficult based on the existing site conditions. And they are requesting a full relief from this requirement. So the applicant has provided a site plan there for you showing the existing grove of trees and states that if they were to build the sidewalk in the location as required, they would be required to remove approximately forty-three trees from the site. So with that, and that would be due to the sidewalk width as well as the required grading that would need be needed to fill the site in order to make the sidewalk meet ADA slope standards. So with that, East Pump Station Road is classified as a neighborhood linked street per the master street plan standards, which typically requires a ten-foot green space and an eight-foot sidewalk to be constructed along the property's frontage with any large-scale development. The applicant did originally request this variance to these standards with their large-scale development. It was ultimately denied by the planning commission. It is worth noting that with that denial, the commission, this this body did recommend a reduction of the width of the required sidewalk to six feet in order to help reduce the impact to the existing trees on the site. There is no existing sidewalk to the north along East Pump Station Road due to an existing cemetery. That's also why there another recent large-scale development that came through to kind of the northeast of the site was not required to build any sidewalk with their associated development because there was no feasible sidewalk connection at that time. So with that, staff does find that the south side of East Pump Station Road is really the only feasible location for any sidewalk to be located along East Pump Station Road. So staff has a couple, some differing feedback on the request, but we'll just cover that in full here. So urban forestry staff is actually running in recommending in favor of the amendment, finding that at least half of the trees in the existing pine grove would have to be removed. Again, not only due to the width of the trail, but to the proposed grading that the trail would require with that existing slope. I'll go back to that exhibit there. Urban forestry contends that the value of these trees does add needed shade and character along East Pump Station Road, and it would ultimately take decades to replace with new trees. The trees are approximately forty years old, and they are dated at approximately the same time that an associated water line was installed just below the grove of trees. So speaking to that water line, the existing pine trees, so given urban forestry's findings, it is worth noting that the existing pine trees are located not only within the existing city right-of-way, but also within an existing general utility easement that is located behind or just to the south of that existing right-of-way. And that utility easement does have an existing twelve-inch water line that is approximately forty years old according to the as-built plans that are held by the engineering division. Because of the age of the water line, it is likely to require maintenance, repair, and or extension in the near future, which would also negatively impact the trees as they would also be required to be removed with that needed maintenance. So with these findings, staff ultimately is recommending a denial of the request in in the applicant's requested amendment to the project's conditions of approval. We find that there is not a site-specific reason for the support of the request. We find that the location of the trees within the right-of-way and an existing utility easement does not guarantee their survival beyond the proposed sidewalk improvements associated with this particular large-scale development. Staff, however, would recommend an alter in favor of an alternative, suggesting that routing the sidewalk further south to be in in line with the existing water line could help avoid some tree removal within the right-of-way. So with that, if an alternative route is accepted, we would recommend that the sidewalk be placed also in a dedicated access easement if it is to be located outside of the right-of-way. So with that, we have not received any public comment on the item, and we are recommending, again, in denial of the request. And I can answer any questions you might have.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Masters. We'll call on you if we have anything else. Next, we'll hear from the applicant. Is the applicant here to speak to this item? If you would, please, sir, come up. State your name and anything else you'd like us to know. Thank you.
Sam Hurst, representing Marshalltown Company. Marshalltown does not want to cut down the the pine grove trees. We believe them to be one of the nicest natural features in the industrial park. We don't want to be unreasonable. We do want to help improve the industrial park, but the location of the sidewalk is not practical due to the trees and the grading. I would instead propose that we finish out sidewalk on Industrial Drive. That would allow us to connect to the St. Paul Trail. I would also like to mention that Marshalltown has already donated land south of our Armstrong facility. The intent was to extend the St. Paul Trail and connect that to make it longer. We believe that this would be a better use of our property than taking out the the pine grove. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll call on you if you if we have any additional questions. Next, we'll hear from the public. If any members of the public would like to speak to this item, we just ask that you either raise your virtual hand or come up to the podium. Seeing no public comment, I'll turn it over to the commission. Commissioners.
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner, go ahead.
For Ms. Masters. So you're saying that where the trees are, we have a water sewer line that is going to require maintenance here soon. Do you have an estimate on how long that'll take or when it will need to be repaired?
I do not have an estimate on when that would occur. Engineering may be able to provide a more approximate timeline.
Okay, I I don't know if the timeline's necessarily important. So I don't even know I asked fully for an estimate, to be honest, but I guess what I'm trying to get to is is this a situation where where we would be prolonging the inevitable when it comes to these trees, where whether they take them down to build the sidewalk or we have to go in for maintenance and the trees have to go down? Is it an inevitable situation?
I think that's essentially staff's position at this time. Because of the tree's location within right-of-way and within utility easement, the trees would potentially have to come down in either instance. So for for instance, trees that are located within right-of-way or utility easements don't typically get to count in favor for a developer for tree preservation because of their somewhat precarious position within those things. So yeah, within any utility easement, a tree could be removed by a utility company not and then with any right-of-way as well. So I think the short answer to your question is yes, it could be somewhat of an inevitability that those trees would come down.
And did urban forestry put that into account when they gave their recommendation?
They did not write that into their staff memo, but I think in this instance, they they were leaning on the fact, and we do have Melissa Evans here to speak to this, but I think they were leaning on the fact that you know, that those trees are longstanding. They are of a mature age, and the longer we can keep them, the the better off the the streetscape will probably be. So.
Okay, can we get Ms. Evans on to so I can see where she stands on that in terms of their findings and that inevitability point standpoint?
Yes, thank you. Hi, this is Melissa Evans, urban forester. Ms. Masters stated it well. I do realize that there is, you know, the trees, part of them are in the right-of-way, existing right-of-way, and then there's also that utility easement that's existing. So of course, any tree in existing right-of-way or existing easements are, you know, subject to removal at any time. This is a pretty special stand of pine trees in my urban forestry opinion. So of course, I, you know, wanted to recommend to keep them or try to as long as possible, but know that you know, inevitably, their work may need to have to occur in there for utilities or whatever, and they may have to come out. Does that help answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you. So it sounds like from from what I'm hearing, staff is going off the basis of the city twenty forty plans and goals of the sidewalks that we want to put in place and that these trees are going to come down inevitably at some point. Urban forestry is looking from the standpoint that they would like to preserve the trees as long as possible, especially these trees being considered pretty special and forty years old. I'm not one to necessarily advocate for cutting down trees, but I can't imagine really proposing any alternate route or any alternate route or approving this, knowing that these are not trees that were necessarily saving, but prolonging the inevitable. So I'm leaning more towards staff's recommendation. And Ms. Masters, can you help me out? Because on the staff report, it says staff recommends denial of ADM two thousand and twenty-two zero thirty-eight to the city council, and then the recommended motion I see I moved forward ADM two thousand and twenty-two zeros thirty-eight.
My apologies. That's a typo. The recommendation would be I move to deny.
Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and put a motion on the table, but I'd love to hear from other commissioners if anyone has any other thoughts, but I move to deny ADM two thousand and twenty-two zeros thirty-eight to the city council with the recommendation of denial with conditions outlined by staff. Am I saying that right?
My apologies.
Okay.
I bungled the language there. I apologize. It would just be a motion to deny. There would be no recommendation.
Okay, I move to deny ADM two thousand and twenty-two zeros thirty-eight.
Mr. Commissioner.
Commissioner Garlock.
I would like to second the denial of ADM two thousand and twenty-two dash thirty-eight for the same reasons that talked about by Commissioner Canada, and it is important not to go back to the nineteen sixties where we don't have any sidewalks. Granted, there can't be a sidewalk on the other side of the street, and it's important because there is a planned park down that direction. So I I'm in favor of denial too. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Garlock. And just so, Commissioner Swer, we do have a motion to deny ADM two thousand and twenty-two zeros thirty-eight from Commissioner Canada with a second from Commissioner Garlock. Do we have any other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Winston.
I guess a question for staff. Removing trees can can become expensive, possibly the thousand dollars a tree or something like that. If there there's forty trees, who's who is responsible for paying for all the tree removal?
In this instance, that burden would be on the applicant since it is a condition of their large-scale development approval.
Okay. That's a that's a it's quite a chunk of money to to request people to buck up for, even if they are a company. And so I I definitely feel the pain on that one. And I would like to find some other way to do this that either didn't require as many trees to be actively removed at this point or Allowed, you know, them to, you know, meander a sidewalk through here or or something like that. Did staff consider? What it would mean for the sidewalk to meander between the trees? Was there any discussion about about that idea?
Yes, so staff did offer some recommendations of alternative locations. I guess one recommendation for an alternative location in this instance. One one alternative would be to shift the sidewalk. I mean, while we don't want the sidewalk to jog too much and out of the way. Because we want the sidewalk to function, you know, as. Straightly as possible. The recommendation would be to kind of shift the sidewalk to the south. And so it would be more in line with the water line so that if and when maintenance on that water line did occur. The trees in the right-of-way could potentially be preserved a little bit longer. And that, you know, since the trees would be removed to build the sidewalk and the water line, that you wouldn't. You basically only have to remove one set of trees rather than all of them, if that makes sense.
And can you can you clarify with denial of this request? What exactly would are we asking them to build? Are we asking them to remove all of the trees and build the sidewalk? At the back of the curb?
The way that the condition of approval reads from the original large-scale development is that they are to build six-foot sidewalk essentially at the back of the right-of-way.
At the back of the right-of-way, okay. And so then I just have a question for the applicant. If you come up for a minute to the microphone. Have have you discussed with with your company? Alternative ways of of building the sidewalk that that makes some sense to you?
Short answer, yes. You know. The best way to preserve those trees is to not put sidewalk through there. It's possible to come all the way south, which would basically come away from the the right-of-way. Onto Marshalltown's actual property where we potentially could expand in the future if we needed to. What we would like to do is just connect to the trail that's already there. We already have an extension of the trails and if we come. Down industrial instead of pump station, we thought that would be the best compromise where we still have that trail system. And everything gets to stay where it's at.
While you're up here, can we pull that map up of the property and so maybe we can use that as a visual aid to figure out what exactly it is that we're. Talking about. About moving that connection on to industrial instead of instead of coming down pump station. Is there a is there a way to point out like with a cursor or something like that what that would look like?
So the utility easement is just to the south here, kind of where I'm showing my cursor. Thought the water line was on this, but I'm not seeing it at the moment. I think it is. Oh, yeah, here it is. The water line is located approximately here.
And does the water line run through the trees?
The water line runs through the trees currently.
Sort of the center directly? Kind of thing, okay. And and the gentleman was proposing. Moving the sidewalk to run across from.
Industrial.
Industrial, right? Can you point out on the map what that would look like?
I don't have industrial drive shown on this map.
Maybe the big aerial.
I believe, yes, it's over here.
And so if. I guess, what is the loss of utility for people to get to the trail? Should there not be a sidewalk along Pump Station Road? Can people navigate that or or, you know, without? Is there is there some some portion of of area that would be underserved? By not being able to use a sidewalk there?
Pedestrians would not have a sidewalk on on or excuse me, on Pump Station Road if this were not to be built. So we would have pedestrians walking in the street.
In the street, okay.
I did want to just clarify also that as part of their large-scale development, the applicant is already required to build six-foot sidewalk along Industrial Drive.
Okay, very good. So what if you were to build? Or would would Marshalltown prefer to build the sidewalk along the water line rather than. Entirely within the the grove of trees?
If that was what we had to choose. I guess, yes, but I don't think that's going to minimize much. Following the way, to your point when we were looking at that, the water line is right through the middle of the grove. And the grading there is such that we're not just taking out the six foot for, you know, and, you know, a foot either way of that of trees. There's going to be significant grading that has to be done to make it ADA compliant and things of those nature, so we're going to be going. Way, way further than the sidewalk is. However, why do we go with that? So I don't think it's going to minimize anything there, whether we go up by the right-of-way or if we follow the water line. And so that's why we would we would prefer to just connect an existing trail that's there.
So don't leave yet, but question for staff. I wouldn't imagine that you'd want them to build the sidewalk on top of the water line.
That is essentially what staff is recommending at this time. That's that would be in an effort to. Minimize the amount of tree removal that would have to take place. So again, the water line is something that will eventually need require maintenance and. The sidewalk would potentially have to be torn up at that time to repair or replace the water line, but it would basically. You know, if the sidewalk were to be built within the right-of-way currently, you would potentially have basically two separate times when trees would get removed. In that area as opposed to just one.
Can't imagine that we would like to do either of those. If I've heard correctly. You know, the idea is that we need to do this because at some point in time, no one knows when, we may have to do some plumbing work. And now we know that we're going to have to come, we're going to do this. You guys are going to ask us to tear it up for the plumbing work. Those two things don't go. Hand in hand to me.
Yeah, I I agree. That seems like. Setting ourselves up for having to, well, build the sidewalk twice. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I guess it makes a little bit more sense to me to to put the sidewalk, if we have to have a sidewalk, to put it. Farther on to Marshalltown's property. And so what what kind of discussions have you had internally about about that alternative?
Just that it's a it's a possibility, but we wanted to see what options we had to to not do that. As I said, that's an area that we, you know, employees use, take breaks, take lunches, things like that. We have multiple people. That bike and 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 run and jog throughout the day. And I I would say it's mostly Marshalltown people. There's there's, I know we're talking about a neighborhood link and things like that. Today, we don't see that. We see the Marshalltown people there. And we also, all those people utilize the St. Paul Trail. And so trying to maximize that is really the direction where we were trying to go. As far as people not being to access it from from East Pump or from Pump Station Road, the St. Paul Trail does connect Armstrong. Where we do have sidewalk going north, south, east and west all along there, and so I don't think it would be. Very many people in in the roadways because of that if we were to connect it.
Yeah, I understand. And that was another question I had was about. How does how does the employees of Marshalltown utilize this grove of trees? Is it? You were saying that people do have lunch there?
Absolutely. Breaks breaks throughout the day before and after shift. You'll see people out there. We have, you know, a couple of times, maybe once or twice a year, we may have, you know, company outings or barbecues, things like that. It's more than more than once has been used for, you know. Kid kid play for for blow-up houses and things like that while we're doing company outings. It's a it's a nice, it's a nice feature in an industrial park.
I'm I guess I'm concerned that. That Marshalltown is going to incur a large expense, also lose an amenity that 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 is currently being. Taken advantage of, possibly build a sidewalk that's going to be torn up again. And 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 on the other side of that, I'm concerned that there's not support amongst this body for alternatives. I'm wondering if if you'd like to take to table this and take some time to come up with a plan that 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 would be. More beneficial to Marshalltown, but also does have a a sidewalk built somewhere.
Yes.
Very good. Mr. Chair, I'm going to move to table. Would you like to do this in two weeks or maybe a month or something like that?
Month.
A month. I'd like to make a motion to table this to the. Plan Commission approximately a month from now.
I have a motion to table which would supersede the motion to deny if seconded.
I'll second.
Thank you. Looks like we do have a motion to table, so. Do we have any additional comments before we go to the vote?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I do. And sorry, I apologize. I did leave Commissioner Madden's hand up. Commissioner Madden.
This this may be a crazy question and I'm not sure if it's for staff or for it's for. Mr. Pennington or if it's for the applicant. We've heard like three or four times that there's no way that the sidewalk will ever be built. Across the street because it's a cemetery and I'm curious, I'm wondering if that statement is somewhat misleading. Because if I'm not mistaken, based on the map we were just looking at, there is also a public right-of-way across the street. It's not that the cemetery would have to be moved, et cetera, so I'm interpreting the fact. The the comment that it will never happen across the street is because there's no. Plant expectation for development on that side, so therefore, the cemetery would have no plans to build. The sidewalk. So my question is, and I understand this has all kinds of different implications. And looking for alternatives, is there any scenario where an applicant could build a sidewalk? In the right-of-way, not on their side of the street? Is that just totally crazy? Or is that an alternative that could be looked at?
I, Mr. Chair, I can start. So I I think to the first point, I think, yes, redevelopment of the cemetery is not likely and so therefore sidewalk to be built. In association with the redevelopment is not likely to be feasible, given given the current land use there. As far as existing right-of-way, I think that there could be potentially a case for building sidewalk in the right-of-way in front of the cemetery. But that wasn't on the table as far as staff's consideration at the at this time, but because it is public, you know, if there is public right-of-way. I don't see that as being off the table. I do know that there is a pretty significant grade on the other side of the street as well, but we haven't fully analyzed that consideration.
Okay, I guess that it look, I was curious about that because the topo all looks like it, it only shows up on on the applicant's property. So I was curious if it's more flat across the street or if just the topo is not shown on that parcel of the cemetery.
Commissioner Johnson, Melissa Evans from Urban Forestry does have her hand raised.
Alright, let's hear from Ms. Evans.
Thank you so much. One thing about the land across the street, there are trees in that right-of-way too. Adjacent to the cemetery and if you look at street view aerial photography, GIS for this, I mean it. The the trees on both sides of the street really make that, you know, driving through that portion of Pump Station Road. Special and, you know, just having those trees on both sides lining the street. Anyway, for whatever that's worth, just wanted to.
I did recognize that were trees, but from the view I was looking at, I couldn't tell if they were as mature and as large of a stand as what's on the applicant's property. So I'm just trying to explore alternatives.
Right, there and it's a mix of cedar and deciduous trees. They're not all pine trees on the other side of the street. They're not quite as tall, but they're pretty close.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Madden and Commissioner Garlock. We'll get to you in just one second. I know Mr. Baccaccio's hand was up too earlier and I just want to make sure I gave him the opportunity to speak and then we'll go right to Commissioner Garlock. Mr. Baccaccio.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair. I I did have some comments to make, but it sounds like if the commission is planning on tabling. Tabling this item, I might hold those to a future date.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Baccaccio. Commissioner Garlock.
Thank you very much. Trees can be timbered and logged. They could help defray the cost, especially if there's going to be a sidewalk in need because there is a need to go down the street to the park. So I guess I'm kind of still need to be convinced because I do think there needs to be a sidewalk there, but. That would help defray some of the costs. Also, pine trees are very quick growing, lob lollies. I don't know whether that meet the city standards or Ms. Evans and urban forestry. But I think with them, they could probably come up with a fast-growing tree. I hate to see trees get cut down. But I think in order to to kind of stick to the twenty forty plan, I think it's very important to have walkable area, especially to our parks. So thank you very much for that consideration. Comments?
Thank you, Commissioner Garlock. Commissioner Brink.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I understand the the proposal on the table now to table. But I've heard it a couple of times tonight. I just, it was a question for Ms. Masters. As I recall, they they are already. Supposed to build a sidewalk, the entirety down Armstrong, or is there a portion that they're missing? What what's the trade-off there?
The portion of sidewalk that they're required to build along Industrial Drive, let me just navigate to that one moment, please.
And I may have misspoke, yes, industrial.
One moment, let me get that re-pulled back up here. There. There is some of the frontage along Industrial Drive already has sidewalks, so the requirement is that they build it, they make up the difference along industrial. I don't remember the exact linear footage of that, but it is not the entire length of industrial drive. It is just a portion of it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I I'm, I I always like to take the opportunity to get sidewalks, create connectivity. I I, you know, it could be years. I I would like to see a sidewalk as proposed. But I am certainly open to to hearing other suggestions. Moving it further south, I think that creates more cost and just having to fill in to meet grade. So it's kind of a sticky situation, but you know, as it stands in terms of tabling, I'll be voting in favor of that. But I I would like to see other. Other options, for sure. Thank you, Commissioner Brink. I'll I'll just kind of echo your comments there. You know, this, the connection of the St. Paul's Trail to. The Greenway is in the city's bond program. It should happen in phase three and so. Talking about a lot of miles of connectivity and acquisition that the city is going to have to make to make that happen. And then once it does happen, it is going to be connected to the broader trail infrastructure, whereas today it kind of, you know. Sits alone other than some share roads that are out there. So I I I agree, we've seen a lot of development in the last few years. Down here, thanks to, you know, great folks who have come and invested like Marshalltown in. Our industrial area of town, but we do want to meet city goals. We do want to keep it connected. And I'm not dedicated to the sidewalk. Being as it was laid out in the large-scale development, but would like to see some options, so. We do have a motion to table from Commissioner Winston with a second from Commissioner Hold. To the, I believe, the August twenty-second Plan Commission meeting. Do we have any other comments before we go to vote?
Mr. Chair, I'll be voting, I'll be voting in denial of the table. I'm simply not convinced that even with the alternative route, I mean. We're hearing that inevitably these trees are going to come, have to come down. I'm all about the city's twenty forty plan and knowing knowing that fully, I want to stick with it, knowing that. Once again, these trees have to come down. Along with the large-scale development, they already. Are being asked to build the sidewalk and in terms of costs, they can clearly offset it by selling off the trees. It's not as large of a cost as we're thinking of. they can clearly offset it by selling off the trees. It's not as large of a cost as we're thinking of it bare bones. And so I'm just not convinced of the entertaining of finding alternate routes. If we can stick to the twenty forty plan with nothing, in my viewpoint, being detrimental to sticking to it at this point.
All right, thank you, Commissioner K. Uh Commissioner Winston.
Mr. Chair, um uh I guess a question for staff. Just want to clarify that uh that that uh while Marsh Town is considering uh alternative possibilities for making a uh sidewalk connection, that they can have uh um the option of uh looking at putting the sidewalk on the other side of the street um in within the right-of-way. Is that correct? Is it is is there anything else they need to understand about about uh limitations on that?
I don't believe there would be necessarily anything saying they couldn't do that. Uh but I would have to, I would have to double-check that. I don't think that's a question that I have had come up in the past. But since it is the city's right-of-way, um there we're not asking them to put sidewalk on a pri- on another private property. So I think that's something that could be explored.
Very good, thank you. And so if um if you can just contact the city in the next few days and see if if there's any anything that's come up on that and make sure everybody's on the same page. Thank you.
Commissioner Brink? Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I wanted to address that. So as I recall, did did staff say that the property to the I'm assuming the northeast was not required to have a sidewalk when they were developed?
That is correct. Um considering that there was not going to be a feasible connection, uh that large-scale development to the northeast uh did not have to build sidewalk along the uh Pump Station Road frontage. They did have to build sidewalk. They have uh sidewalk along, I'm blanking on the street name here at the moment, uh on Leaper Drive. They did have to build sidewalk along that frontage.
So hypothetically, if if we if that was a proposal, um it would not be connected for some years if it were built across the road.
Um if the commission doesn't mind, I will share my screen just to uh show the site in question. So here is the uh applicant's uh frontage with the pine grove. Uh here's the Combe Cemetery. This is a recent large-scale development that I believe came in around twenty twenty. They did have to build sidewalk along their Leaper Drive frontage, as you can see, is is built out. They were not required to build it along uh East Pump Station Road due to the fact that uh we didn't find that there would be a feasible uh connection with with that.
Thank you, Ms. Masters.
Do you have additional comments?
I do, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question from Ms. Masters. So if you go a little bit to the up up Pump Station Drive, I think to the north, it it looks like there's a sidewalk that ends, so if you go, yeah, to the north. No, no, up Pump Station, sorry, so to the west. Yeah, the sidewalk ends right now across the street at like looks like a pump station. And then it come would have to come back across Pump Station Road and connect there, but then wouldn't further connect anywhere? Are there any requirements for crosswalks? Or I mean, how are you connecting that sidewalk section to the one that's across the street to the west? How how would that work?
I'm sorry, I'm not entirely sure what sidewalk connection you're referring to at the moment.
Okay, if you go to the west.
Yeah, Ms. Masters, I believe it's at the intersection of Industrial and Pump Station.
This one over here.
Yeah.
Um, okay, now that I'm clear on where you're talking, uh what remind me your question?
So just, um what are the provisions to connect the two sections of sidewalk? Because that sidewalk ends there at the pump station, and then we're asking them to put sidewalk in on the other side of the road. Are they required to put in a a si- a crosswalk? Or I mean, how is that, how are those sections going to connect eventually?
Um we are not asking the applicant to put in a crosswalk at this time, um if that's what your question is. We're just asking them to put sidewalk at, you know, sidewalks get developed kind of in a incremental fashion. So right now, we're just asking the applicant to build sidewalk on their frontage along East Pump Station Road. It does look like Josh Pocaccio from Engineering has raised his hand. He might want to answer that as well.
Yeah, if I may, so typically when a development uh constructs sidewalk where a crossing would occur in the future, we have that development build an ADA ramp. Uh so uh this development most likely will have uh uh two ADA ramps on that corner of Industrial and Pump Station uh to be uh connected to at a later time when that lot to the west and to the north um would install sidewalk when they develop or redevelop.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any additional comments before we go to vote?
Commissioner Garlock. Also, I'll be voting with the twenty forty plan and be voting uh to uh deny the tabling. You know, other ideas could be fees in lieu of that when that would break, but we can't talk about fees in lieu of. But uh rather than just trying to get out of the sidewalk, making it more uh consistent with the plan. So I'll be voting against ta- the table. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Garlock. Ms. Masters, will you please call the vote when you're ready?
Johnson?
Yes.
Garlock?
No.
Madden?
Yes.
Holcomb?
Yes.
Brink?
Yes.
McGetrick?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Canada?
No.
Motion to table carries.
All right, thank you. We'll revisit this again in one month. Our next item of new business is VAR twenty twenty-two zeros fifty-nine. It's a variance submitted by Jorgensen and Associates for a property located at two seven fifty East Joyce Boulevard. The property is owned C-one Neighborhood Commercial. It contains approximately one point two eight acres. The request is for a variance to the allowed parking spaces. And Ms. Harrison has our staff report.
Mr. Chair, I need to recuse myself from this item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh so the subject property for this request is located in northeast Fayetteville, about six hundred feet west of the intersection of Joyce Boulevard and Crossover Road. And the property is currently zoned to C-one Neighborhood Commercial, and it contains about one point two eight acres. Um it is the only remaining undeveloped lot in the Mill- Millennium Place Commercial subdivision, um which was plotted in two thousand. Um the medical associates of Northwest Arkansas, otherwise known as Manna, is looking to develop this property as a new location for their chiropractic clinic. Uh currently, Manna's chiropractic chiropractic clinic is located just west of this property on the other side of Millennium Drive. At its current location, the clinic averages the flow of thirty-six patients every one and a half hours with four physicians, fifteen staff, and ten interns at one time, um which means that they are typically having about sixty-five people onsite at any given time during their business hours. Um based on those estimates provided by the applicant, parking is currently undersupplied at the clinic's current location. Since the property contains three tenants, um which share sixty-four parking spaces. Uh to accommodate the clinic's growth, Manna is looking to develop a new nine thousand square foot facility on the subject property. Um the maximum number of parking spaces permitted for a medical clinic is based on a ratio of one per every two hundred and fifty square feet of gross floor area, um meaning that the maximum number of parking spaces allowed for the proposed development would be um thirty-six spaces without um utilizing any increases as provided by code. Um the applicant has, however, offered to utilize all of those increases, including a fifty fifteen percent by right increase, um a ten percent in- increase for the use of LID technologies, and an additional five percent increase for additional tree plantings, which would bring their maximum allowed to forty-seven off-street parking spaces. Um the applicant has requested a variance from UDC one seventy-two oh five um to allow them to exceed the forty-seven spaces permitted with those increases um by forty spaces. The applicant has asserted that um additional parking is needed in the amount of eighty-seven total parking spaces to accommodate an increase in the number of physicians and patients associated with this planned expansion of the clinic. Um as proposed, there would be an average flow of fifty-four patients every one and a half hours with six physicians, nineteen staff, and ten interns onsite at any given time during normal business hours. Um and considering this requested variance, staff determined that meeting the letter of the code in this instance may result in an undersupply of parking for the clinic with overflow onto adjacent properties. Um based on the figures that the applicant provided, the variance recommended appears to be the minimum necessary to provide parking onsite for this proposed clinic. Further, staff found that the applicant is meeting the intent of the code by utilizing all of those increases that are available to them and by providing cross-access with adjacent properties to the east. Um and visiting the site, uh staff also found that the subject property is currently being used as an off-site overflow parking area for surrounding businesses, further indicating that additional parking may be necessary and appropriate in this instance. Um however, staff did receive a revised request letter earlier today um from the applicant. In that letter, they did state that seventy-one parking spaces are needed to accommodate the clinic parking at full capacity on this new property. Um they have also shared a shared parking agreement with the landowner to the east. Um with the revised proposal that was submitted earlier today, the parking lot would contain a total of eighty-five parking spaces. So two less than what was originally requested, um which would be partially shared with the property owner to the east. Um still, staff is recommending approval um of the applicant's original request, um since that was what was reevaluated in the staff report. Um though we are supportive of the applicant's revised request to provide eighty-five parking spaces, which would be partially shared. Um no public comment was offered on this item, though I'd be happy to help answer any questions that you may have about this request. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Harrison. We'll call you if we have any additional questions. Next, we'll hear from the applicant. Looks like we have a raised hand from Blake Jorgensen. Mr. Jorgensen, you have the floor.
Uh good evening, planning commission. I appreciate y'all's time tonight. And we apologize to staff and commission as well for a late submission to the this, we kind of amended this request. We've been working with the property to the, property owner to the east is the one selling this property uh to Manna, and um we've been working on a shared parking agreement. I know those help go a long way in terms of trying to support a variance in this type. And um and, you know, Manna's a a wide umbrella for a lot of different projects and um services in the the medical facility in this area. And so um, you know, I I'm a patient that goes to loan contractors. It's a Dr. Whitelaw's one of my guys. He, I I met him twenty years ago when I was running track at U of A. And uh and, you know, the older I get, the more I have to use the chiropractor. So um a- a- as a, you know, a patient that goes to this facility, I know they're they're extremely busy. It's a, it's an in-and-out kind of service, but um, you know, we hope that the commission can support this variance. And if y'all have questions, I'm happy to answer them. So thanks for your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jorgensen. We'll call you if we have anything. Next, we'll hear from the public. Any members of the public would like to speak to this item, we ask you to either raise your virtual hand or step up to the podium. You see none, I'll turn it over to the commission. Commissioners? Commissioner Brink?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, you know, I, while I I I generally don't like, you know, just masses of a- of asphalt. I, you know, I I really lean on our businesses in Fayetteville to know how much parking they need. And, you know, I I I I don't really have an issue with any of this, so I move to approve VAR twenty twenty-two zeros thirty-nine.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion to approve VAR twenty twenty-two zero thirty-nine from uh Commissioner Brink with a second from Commissioner Winston. Ms. Masters, I I know in the past when we've had parking overages, we've we've kind of opted for um some additional low-impact design or, you know, permeable pavement. Um are there any options or anything else that we can enact to kind of help uh with this specific?
You you could uh recommend a condition of approval that would have a rational nexus or a logical connection to to the applicant's request. I do think that the applicant is already uh um maxing out their low-impact design, you know, their by-right options. So if there's anything additional that the commission would like the applicant to consider, um that is within your um ability to do so. Uh I may defer to Gretchen Harrison on any specifics uh that may have been discussed as far as that is concerned. And I may defer to the applicant as well if that's something that they are open to.
All right, thank you. Uh you know, I I know we've required this in the past. Uh first thing that comes to mind is torches. Um they had a lot of overages, and I I think there's one parking row that has a different pavement surface. But I'm curious what the commission thinks, but also okay with approving this one. It it sounds like uh they they've demonstrated need, which is um better than some of the large empty parking lots we have around town. So Commissioner Holcomb?
That's that's my concern as well, is just adding the extra, um worrying about drainage, adding extra space that that could be a concern. I don't, um I'm not sure how we'd want to word if we were to add something.
Thank you, Commissioner Garlock.
It brings up the Joni Mitchell sign of paid paradise, um and put up a parking lot. There is amenities and um when you go to the chiropractor, usually you use physical therapy. I know Manna has physical therapy. It seems sometimes there's a combining these services is the most efficient way. And I I guess I find that we're trying to use a shoehorn to make the intent of this property conform to whatever the use is. There's economies of scale, and that's why sometimes you see a office of internal medicine, family practice, and peds, or just a cardiologist and some subspecialties. I I guess I uh think this place is already used as a parking lot, if you've been by there. Um and I I have some severe concerns about just adding more parking by a building um on a street that has uh really come along pretty well. I do have concerns about just having major parking lots. Uh I think combining services based on their focal folk-on-ness is actually more efficient. And I know there's a number of rehab places there, not by Manna, but I know there are rehab places in um other areas by Manna that maybe could combine the chiropractic services. So I just have real severe apprehensive about just adding more parking spaces and come some and. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Garlock. Commissioner Madden?
Was that me?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, you're, it broke up on my screen. Um I do appreciate uh Mr. Jorgensen and Manna adding the couple of uh reduction in the shared spaces because I mentioned that at the agenda session last week. So I I I know that's an increment of improvement, but but I'm also concerned that this is, you know, a facility that's only going to be used part-time, you know, eight, ten, how many ever hours, even if it's twelve hours a day uh on just having a big parking lot. I am curious whether any exploration, oftentimes shared parking agreements work really well. For example, when you have multifamily housing where Monday to Friday during the working day, most of those spaces are probably empty or some percentage of them. I do appreciate there is now a shared agreement to the east. Were any other potential shared agreements explored um rather than just trying to provide all that parking onsite? I guess that's a question for Mr. Jorgensen.
Ms. Com- Commissioner Madden, would you like us to ask Mr. Jorgensen that?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Jorgensen?
Mr. Jorgensen, you have the floor.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good deal. Yeah, I didn't get the uh the, well, icon set on mute, so um. Let me answer the first question. We have already offered up to go above and beyond for store mart equality. Um so our low-impact development features, um our store mart equality, all that's going to be incorporated into this um variance. And so we, by uh by y'all's vote, will have to abide by going above and beyond um just normal store mart quality uh management features. And so um I didn't want to point that out. That's that's some of the first things we offered up. In terms of shared parking agreements, um we made an agreement to the the property owner to the east. That that's the property yard that's going to utilize the the property the most. There's no, um there's really no one out. I mean, if you look on the the kind of the exhibit I had, the people on it that are to the east are utilizing that parking lot. So that's where there's, that's why there's a shared agreement. You know, and and beyond that, you know how to, I mean, I can't imagine someone parking there to I I don't know, but we've tried to extend an invitation to the most logical um nexus of people who may utilize it. So um that that's where the genesis of that was.
Okay, I think that my my quest would, my question is the, actually the reverse of that. Considering the Manna employees are already walking across the street to park on the dirt lot, were there any opportunities for employees to be able to park, for example, at the multifamily property during the workday? Was that Was that sort of sharing agreement pursued? Not so much someone else using the Manna, new Manna lot. Although that also is worthwhile. We're just, just trying to.
Sure, yeah, yeah, yeah. So the, 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 the parent site we're talking about to the west across the street, that will not, that'll disappear. It's not going to be a sister site.
Right. I understand that.
Well, I don't sure what, what multifamily you're talking about.
My understanding was the parcel immediately to the north is a, is multifamily. If that is not correct, I apologize. I was, um, looking at the aerials and looking at the staff report.
I, um, I do believe that's incorrect. It's all commercial, not hub.
Yes, Commissioner Madden, the, the, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was, I read it was south. I apologize. Just trying to explore every opportunity for shared parking, both, you know, after hours on the Manna lot and during the day. If there are other places where Manna employees might park, just because we're creating, you know, we're providing more parking spaces. Than the new building has square footage, which is always a, a, it's always an interesting scenario.
Absolutely, yeah. I, I understand that, yeah. So, um, I, I was confused as well, but yes, there's no, um, multifamily. To the south is, uh, I believe Prism Academy. It's a student, a student, it's almost like, it, it's a school, so. But they'll be utilizing, you know, their hours in the same as Manna, so.
Yeah.
All right, Commissioner Madden, did you have anything else?
That's all. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Canada.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to be in favor of this. I, when it comes to, uh, just medical facilities in general, I tend to be more partial to them. Especially for services, thinking about the popu, who the demographic is, demographic is as well. Like anytime you're dealing with medical, you're talking about people that if they're going to this office, say chiropractor, whatever, they probably have issues. Where them going far distances is going to create a big impact for them to get into this office, especially if you have others, um, parking. Uh, there that don't, aren't even going to the chiropractic office. And, um, I'll tell you from firsthand experience, um, being in pharmaceutical sales, uh, these parking lots get full. I can't even find parking sometimes. So I, I'm fully in support of this and, uh, I'll be voting yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Canada. Commissioner Winston, I see your mic on. Did you have anything else? All right. If we have any other comments before we go to the vote, I, I believe, uh, who had the second on that? I had a motion for Commissioner Winston.
Uh, I had the motion by Commissioner Brink, second by Commissioner Winston.
I wrote them backwards. Thank you. All right. Seeing no additional comments, Ms. Masters, will you please call the vote?
Johnson?
Yes.
Garlock?
No.
Madden?
Yes.
Holcomb?
Yes.
Brink?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Motion to approve carries.
Thank you, Ms. Masters. Our next item of new business is B A R twenty-two zero four-two. It's a variance submitted by Olson Engineering. For a property located at three-seven-eight Eighth North Greg Avenue. Property is owned U T Urban Thoroughfare and contains approximately seventeen-point-three-two acres. The request is for a variance to, from U D C one-seven-two-point-oh-four-C-four. Parking lot design standards and one-seven-seven-point-oh-four-D-two site development and parking lot landscape standards. And Mr. Unberger has our staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, these subject properties are in North Fayetteville. They're at the northeast corner of Greg Avenue and Van Ash Drive. Uh, this is a greenfield site that, uh, covers approximately seventeen-point-three-two acres and is its own U T Urban Thoroughfare. There's a little tree canopy on this property apart from a band of trees that you can see near the, uh, north property line that follows, uh, along the east property lines. Um, and then there are street trees along North Greg Avenue. Uh, this property is very flat apart from a retaining wall that follows along that, that band of trees along the north and east property lines. And there is a, a depression kind of where that retaining wall ends near the southeast corner of this property. The applicant is requesting th- uh, three variances from Unified Development Code, Chapter, uh, one-seventy-two-oh-four-C-four. That's our parking lot design standards, and they're requesting one variance from one-seventy-seven-oh-four-D-two. That's a landscape area, uh, requirements. The applicant, uh, requests variances to allow drivelines and parking between future structures on the right-of-way. Uh, on a, on a few proposed lots, uh, that are being proposed with an associated, uh, preliminary plat. Um, they are also requesting a variance to waive a requirement for a, um, and I apologize because the staff report says fourteen-foot. But it should, uh, read fifteen-foot landscape area on one of those lots. We haven't received any, uh, formal development proposals for, for any of these lots. Um, but we did receive a preliminary plat application that was, uh, reviewed and tabled at the tech plat meeting on June twenty-ninth. Um, so the first variance is to our parking lot design standards, and that is in urban zoning district. A drive-through lane, parking lot drive aisle, or parking spaces are not permitted to be located in the front yard directly between a building and the master street plan right-of-way. Um, the applicant is requesting, uh, that in order to provide adequate circulation, businesses may need drive-through aisles, drivelines. Or parking spaces to be located between the building and the street. The applicant suggests requests are, like granting the variance would make the, the property usable for a retirement community for the northernmost lot. That's the site plan you see there. Quick service restaurants and retail. The, uh, request, or sorry, in the request letter, the applicant cites, uh, three twenty-foot wide easements. That totals sixty feet in width as a site-specific challenge. North Greg, uh, along North Greg Avenue, there's a twelve-inch water main and thirty-inch sanitary sewer main. That are present in the dedicated easements. So staff, uh, is not supportive of, of the variances, um, and that, that would apply to all three of the areas that they identified in their letter. Um, we find that there's limited, if any, practical difficulties, uh, that prevent placement of, of drivelines and parking. Uh, to the sides and the rears of the proposed structures. We do acknowledge that the presence of major utility infrastructure is undeniably a challenge, especially along North Greg Avenue. Um, the easements there encumber approximately two-point-seven-seven acres of the property's overall frontage along Greg. And relocating those utilities would, would certainly represent a, a substantial cost. We also re- acknowledge that this area could be, uh, the site, the potential site for quick service restaurants, retail or. Other services that attract customers regionally. Um, and those customers are likely to, to use vehicles to access the property. Um, staff ha- finds, however, that granting the variance may compromise an intent of the form-based zoning district. Which aims to create high-quality pedestrian streetscapes. The easements, uh, along the property's frontage limit the space that the, the structures are permitted to occupy. Um, but staff has not identified any factors that would inhibit a future development from locating the drive aisles and parking. At the, the sides and rears of structures. So in, in the intent of, uh, encouraging good architectural form and providing that high pedestrian, pedestrian. That high-quality pedestrian environment, um, and ensuring that new development is compatible with its surroundings. The city of Fayetteville adopted the, the form-based zoning districts, um, and those districts do have heightened design requirements for parking lots and driveways. Among other considerations. Accordingly, that requirement, uh, there, there is a requirement that prohibits drive-through lanes and parking. Between the, the principal facade of a building and, and streets. And, uh, the zoning districts that include build-two zones. Uh, so approval of the requested variance would permit drive aisles and parking on segments of, of Greg and Van Ash. That totals just under a quarter mile in length overall. And, uh, at, at these locations, uh, we find that non-motorized users, users would be flanked by thoroughfare. Uh, thoroughfares either to, um, uh, thoroughfares with the, the public streets running alongside the sidewalks. Uh, that are intended to facilitate traffic at relatively high speeds. Um, and then on the other side, they would have a, a drive aisle or parking. We find that this, uh, this undermines, uh, intends to enhance non-motorized, uh, uh, transportation. And, and might reduce comfort, which would dissuade people from using, uh, sidewalks at this location. Uh, and so accordingly, staff is recommending denial of the requested variance on the, the lots that you see indicated there with a, a red star. The next variance is a request for, uh, uh, relief from a, requiring a fifteen-foot wide landscaped area. And generally, that fifteen-foot wide landscaped area is required to be provided along the front property line exclusive of and adjacent to the master street. Plan right-of-way. In the request letter, the applicant indicates, uh, those easements are an impediment. That prevents them from meeting the typical requirement. Uh, for this variance, staff is supportive of the variance request for a landscape buffer. And, uh, just allowing them to, to reduce or remove that, that buffer entirely. We agree that the, the site has design constraints associated with the utility easements along its frontage. Um, and that does inhibit the accommodation of typical green space. The spirit and intent of the ordinance is being met due to the easement area functioning as a green space. And as indicated in the request letter, the applicant still intends to provide seven-and-a-half feet of green space exclusive of the right-of-way. Along the northern portion of the site, plus an additional twenty-three feet of green space, uh, from the sidewalk along North Greg Avenue. And the edge of the right-of-way. The applicant is also showing six feet of green space exclusive of the right-of-way along the southern portion of the site. Where there's an additional fourteen feet of green space from the sidewalk, uh, to the edge of the right-of-way. Staff finds the amount of green space on the applicant's property is enough area for street trees to grow well. And that the green space requirements are being met on the other perimeters of the site, and therefore we are recommending approval of, of this variance. We have not received any public comment regarding this specific variance request under consideration. Uh, though we did feel the call from a member of the public who urged the planning commission to be mindful of flooding issues, um, experienced by homes to the south. Of the subject property. Uh, so, uh, staff is, is recommending partial approval of the variance, as written on the, I believe that's the third page of your reports. And I can stand for any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Unberger. We'll call you if we have anything. Next, we'll hear from the applicant. Is the applicant here to speak to this item? If you would please state your name and, uh, anything else you'd like us to know. Thank you.
Uh, good evening. Uh, Rusty Cohen with Olson Engineering, uh, three-oh-two Millsap in Fayetteville. Uh, seven-two-seven-zero-three. Uh, we're here tonight representing Commercial Realty. Who has the entire seventeen acres under contract for purchase. We're also here representing, uh, TLC Properties, who in a, in addition has the northern six-point-seven acres. Uh, under contract to purchase for multifamily. Um, as Ryan mentioned, the western edge of, of the property at a Budge Greg has three sixty-foot, or three twenty-foot easements. Totaling sixty feet. And this zone has a, a build-two, which we're, we're trying to meet, get as close as we can. The, we'd like approval and get parking in that area. Otherwise, it's useless area. As far as operating the, the business. Uh, the property is bound on the east side, uh, retaining wall. Also, uh, FEMA floodplain, which makes up the, the bike trail, uh, that our client, that the owner had originally. Dedicated or donated to the city, I should say, back in, uh, two thousand eight, two thousand nine area when they built Van Ash. Um, this property, entire seventeen acres, is a, a kind of a true mixed use. We're, we're planning multifamily on that north end, uh, currently creating multiple lots interior. We've got two seven-thousand-square-foot medical office buildings. We've got a twenty-thousand-square-foot professional office building. Uh, two ten-to-eleven-thousand-square-foot restaurant retail. And, and again, we've got three parcels that we're asking for a variance on. Staff mentioned, uh, the connectivity and the pedestrian-friendly nature. We have sidewalks interior, uh. Commercial Realty is in for the preliminary plat to build access easement, water sewer to each of these lots. Uh, all of these buildings will face interior. Uh, we've got, again, sidewalks running along that access easement, uh, interior. Again, majority of that parking is interior to the site. However, up on the multifamily, um, trying to get that. Building as close to the build-two line as we can, uh, we're requesting be able to use that sixty-foot. To put parking in. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you've got. I know Mr. Bowen here is here with, uh, Commercial Realty. Uh, TLC Properties is also online, I do believe, um, is there out of town, if you have any questions with them.
And did either, either one of them want to speak during this time or would prefer just to be available for questions? Yeah, go ahead and come on up. If you would please just, once you get to the mic, state your name and go from there.
Bowen, uh, Commercial Realty and Bowen Kemp Construction. Uh, we're off thirty-six-eighty Investment Drive. Fayetteville, Arkansas. We're back in the subdivision. We've been working on this property, probably, I think we bought it. When I graduated college, oh-three, oh-four. Um, we've put a lot of time, effort and money into making this thing the. Nicest code that we could do. We make people put in more, you know, specific grass like a zoysia, uh, not just letting them do Bermuda, whatever. It goes along with the codes and steel crossings. Uh, TLC, the group that is applying for the, um, parcel of the six-point-seven acres. Uh, is a group out of Springfield, Missouri. Uh, they just finished one promit, uh, Promenade Commons and Rogers. And are building another thirty-six units. It's a very high-end complex. It includes, uh, uh, what do you call it? The, the, the pickleball, the pool, like a dog park. Um, a lot of facilities for their residences to be able to go and around, uh, inside of there and have a lot of amenities. Unlike most of these apartment complexes around that just will have a pool and a lot of concrete. Um, so will be a lot of turf and, and other things, but it's very important for them to be able to park up in that front. Just because they need that amount of parking. Uh, we don't want to go into one of these shared parking agreements with the rest of myself and Jeff's parcels. I have a list of retailers, restaurants that are lined up, ready to go in here. Uh, we would start at the back. I would put all the infrastructure in. Um, I'm willing to even go above and beyond on the landscape needs. To make, like, I'm not sure if everybody's seen, like, Bass Pro down in Little Rock has it, and Highland Park in Dallas has it. But internally, uh, where we'll have our sidewalks and all our connectivity on the road we put in for the development. Doing some light with some trees or something real nice and inviting, because what we want is everybody that's inside of this park. Twin Creeks, seventeen acres, to be able to move around and go from residence to eat, but we gotta have parking. Um, I've built everything in that subdivision as of recently. Haven't had any issues. Worked with the city of Fayetteville, enjoy, enjoy doing it, resident here. Like I said, this, this is important to them, so it's important to me, and it's just been something that, um, if we can get past that, that parking. Cause, you know, like, like we've said from along, let's vacate all the easements. I'll shove the buildings up on the road. I mean, I have no problem with that. But when we've got a sixty-foot easement, you know, we're kind of, we can't eat two-point-seven-seven acres of Fayetteville's most prominent area right now. Which is North Fayetteville, between our track, Gerald Jones and Pendograph, and that's where all of Fayetteville's growth is commercially. Uh, medically, everything. And it's like, um, we didn't even want the urban thoroughfare. When it was under contract with somebody else, they changed that. I'm fine with the zoning. I'd rather it be C-one like everything across the creek, but beggars can't be choosers. We're just playing that, that, you know, you see the, the intent here, which is to be a master-developed property that connects everybody inside of that. And I promise you, I have a track record, you can go around and see, we do what we say we're going to do, and, you know, I'm just here on behalf of TLC. And just wanted to say that, and we're excited about the project. This is my last little hurdle. So obviously, I'm having to do a drainage report, um, to update all the drainage in there, which we've already got stamped city plans. With all of our pipes going out the back of the property into the floodplain, but we're doing it anyway. Um, so just asking for some help here to accommodate these guys, and it's just kind of really all we can go with it. Cause they need that parking requirement. Um, cause they need that parking requirement, cause there'll be two hundred and ten units, so. That's all I'd say.
Thank you. We'll call on you if we have any additional questions. We also have Harlan Hill, which I believe is uh with the applicant's team. So we'll hear from Harlan here and and then go to public comment. Harlan, you should be able to unmute your microphone and speak.
And can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, Harlan Hill. I am representing the developer TLC Properties. Address is thirty-eight eleven South Weller Avenue, Springfield, Missouri, six five eight oh four. Also, I'd like to mention that I am a graduate of the School of Architecture in Fayetteville. I'm a alum, go Hogs. Um, so with our development, we are proposing, as it was stated previously, a very high-end uh luxury apartment building market rate uh with uh several amenities. So it is not your run-of-the-mill garden-style apartment development. Um, with that, in being able to accommodate our densities that we are proposing, there is a level of parking that we would like to provide for our residents in our site. Um, with that, I can respect the zoning district, urban thoroughfare, um and the intent that it's trying to develop that area. Uh as an architect and designer, though, I feel like the sixty-foot easements have hindered that effect and I don't know that it will ever be realized in that area based on that, because you can't get to the street and develop that urban streetscape as desired, as I understand this zoning district to try and accomplish. Also with that, on the west side of Greg Street, you have the railroad right of way, so you're not going to complete that urban feel of that streetscape on both sides of the property. So it really hinders the intent that I think the planners had in mind. Uh this entire region and area actually supports more of the continuation of the suburban development that is already existing in that region. Um, it just isn't natural in this area to provide that urban density that you would find in a center city and more towards the university in that higher-density development. So with that, I respectfully uh request that you consider these conditions and the ultimate intent of what the design can and should be naturally and what that area lends itself for. So um I just will be available to entertain any further questions at your disposal. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Hill. When I open up to the public.
Mister Chair, if I can, if I can interrupt for a moment, uh the applicant did provide a couple of exhibits. Um, and so I just wanted to offer them the opportunity to speak to any of those exhibits if they wanted to before.
Go right ahead, yeah.
Uh Rusty Cohen again, um. Yeah, this is just kind of a a color depiction of the parcels uh within seventeen acres. Uh again, TLC Northern Peace. On the east side there, they have some garages and then on the on the far east against the the creek, they've got some detached garages as well. Um, I believe there's hundred spaces or so within that hundred parking spaces within that sixty-foot easement along their property. Um, a- and as Mr. Bowen stated, you know, if it, if it's the screen to the parking, that's the issue. Again, I think we're amenable to making some additional landscape. Um, again, and if the city's amenable to having that within the right of way, uh we'll be happy to to do that. Again, I can't put up any kind of screen wall due to those easements. There can't be any structures in there. Uh but again, in my discussions with Mr. Granderson at the city, it's my understanding that we can park in that easement. And th- this is a rendering um that TLC had uh for the development. Um, as as you can see, very, very upscale development. Um, like I said, we just were in need of that surface parking um to meet the one-per-bedroom requirement. Um, I believe there's well over two hundred units and three hundred and fifteen bedrooms, I think, with their mix of studio, you know, all the way up to three bedrooms. Um, and again, uh Ryan, I think, yeah, thi- this picture here is just really kinda showing the the amount of area that those easements take up. Um, again, about an acre on the northern property and one point seven uh probably on the southern property. Um, a- and again, I'd like to point out those second lots, uh where the cursor is right there. Um, Lot A and Lot C of this, those are proposed medical buildings, again, that we have, we were able to put right up to the easement, able to get enough parking interior there, uh as those are a little smaller building. Um, the the third one down, again, is a a quick serve, you know, uh one more, I'm sorry, Ryan. That one is, again, quick serve, coffee shop or a restaurant. We've got the drive-through on the eastern side, top of the page that you're looking at. Parking behind it, not as desirable as we'd like to, as the the front door is on the the Greg Street side. Uh but that allows for some out-outdoor seating. We're requesting, again, a drive to get to the drive-through area. Um, and then Lot twenty-one F right there. We have a, again, mix of retail and restaurant in that one. We've got a drive-through shown on the north end of that building. Um, pushing that all the way to Van Nuys due to the kind of the geometry of Van Nuys and that big curve there uh makes that difficult. And then, again, when you do that, the geometry of where that intersection kinda comes in is also a concern um as as we're looking to get some future larger sit-down restaurants on that corner, um as we think that'll kinda be the entryway to the to the development. Uh but as I mentioned, we've got sidewalks, you know, interior there as the residents from multifamily can get back and forth. We've also proposed a trail easement at the southeast corner, uh Van Nuys, to get down to the bike trail.
Alright, thank you. Alright, do we have any uh public comments on this item? If you're a member of the public and like to speak to this, would you just ask to either raise your uh virtual hand or um step up to the podium? See, now I'll turn it over to the commission commissioners.
Mister, Mister Chair.
Commissioner Winston.
For staff, why is there such a large uh sixty-foot easement there?
I'm not sure of the exact history of of when those easements were plotted.
Is it, was it for like a high-tension line or something like that or?
Um, to my knowledge, the only infrastructure that we're aware, the city infrastructure that's on there are the sewer and water lines. It's possible that there's additional private utility infrastructure in there as well.
Okay, thank you. That's, it's, well, it's an odd situation to have uh such an enormous um uh easement running right through your property. I I don't know why it's there, but um it it makes a lot of sense to me to use it for parking, because that's the only thing you can put there. And um uh you can't put a building there. Um, but it's just about the right size for a double-loaded drive aisle. Um, and um, you know, I I appreciate that what we're, what we're being shown is a double-loaded drive aisle, which is fairly narrow and um and uh um uh much less of of, what we're trying to avoid is the the big parking lots in front. You know, that the building's pushed way back there. Well, this is the, sorry, this is a a four-story building. It's, it is large, it's sort of, it's sort of a, takes up space. Scale-wise, having a a a double-loaded drive aisle in front of a a building of this size doesn't, it 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 counterbalances that uh that that um idea of like, you know, a sea of parking and then a building way back there, that, and that's what we're trying to avoid. So to me, the letter of the law, eh, of the of what we're trying to get after here is actually being satisfied. And um and the the space that that they're requesting to 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 use for parking is space that they can't really use for anything else. Um, and uh uh you know, this is, I I think this is a a project that um looks like it'll be successful and looks good. And and uh um I think there's every reason to to uh take this project, look at it and say, fine, let's let's make an accommodation uh for for our parking lot design standards uh for for this project. They also indicated that they would be happy to um uh add more landscaping trees and stuff like that. And so question to staff is, what, if we were to to request uh an enhancement to um the the landscaping in this zone, what would that look like in a motion?
Uh, I might need to defer to Melissa Evans, if she's available, from Urban Forestry on on something that might be enforceable from from her standpoint.
Ms. Evans, can we hear from?
Yes, thank you. Um, so it could be additional trees on site. I hesitate to say additional street trees, because sometimes, you know, our standard spacing is thirty feet and their, the requirement is for large shade canopy trees, so we don't really want them closer together than that or they get too crowded. Um, but they may have other places on site, you know, um different areas where they could plant some additional trees. Um, that certainly, you know, around the parking lots especially, um is welcome and needed. Um, cause we do, we have a pretty good parking tree requirement, one per twelve spaces, but oftentimes, there's, there are other spaces around parking lots that could use trees.
So Ms. Evans, should I, uh if I was to craft that motion, would I be asking for uh one's, one parking lot tree per, say, uh ten spaces?
Per how many spaces?
Per ten spaces, say, something like that, some enhancement like that?
You could, um.
I I.
And Jesse or Ms. Masters may be able to weigh in on that some too. I I I suppose you could. And I don't know if that means they have to have a tree island per ten spaces or if they could still have a tree island at one per twelve spaces, but then the number of trees is based on ten spaces. I I certainly think that's reasonable, but um again, I may need my colleagues to weigh in on on how best to do that.
Ms. Masters, what the uh wh- what say you about them not necessarily being parking lot trees, but being uh the number of trees on site reflecting some uh a rational ratio like that?
Um, I think, I think you could, you would have some basis in potentially, uh as Melissa was referring to, you know, minimize the the number of spaces in a row. You know, the typical minimum is twelve spaces in a row and then a parking lot tree is required. You could potentially uh double the size of a parking lot tree in between uh the row of parking spaces. You know, you could have a row of twelve spaces and then a parking, you know, a tree island that's maybe uh twice as large as it's required to be. Um, I don't know, just some, just some kind of off, have suggestions there uh to help mitigate some of those concerns.
Okay, well, I think it makes more sense to to have more trees rather than more area around the same tree. Um, so, let's see, I'm gonna um move to approve variance uh to UDC one seventy-two point zero four parking lot design standards. Um, and uh uh approve the variance to UDC one seven seven point zero four D two site development, parking lot design, parking lot landscape standards. Um, with the conditions recommended by staff and also um requiring that that uh there be a tree, a tree on site, whether it's a parking lot tree or not, for every ten spaces of parking.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'd like to discuss it first, if that's appropriate.
Uh, I believe traditionally, we will need a uh a second or the motion itself will fail.
A second.
Okay, so a motion from Commissioner Winston to approve uh VAR twenty-two zeros forty-two with a second from Commissioner McGetrick, uh and we'll go to um Commissioner Garlock here and then Commissioner Madden online and then I'll come over here.
Thank you, Mister Chair. It's always nice to have an opportunity to discuss an item. Um, I tend to agree with uh staff's uh recommendations with regard to parking parking lot design standards. Uh, we just look across the street at the four hundred units that were approved last week. I'm concerned about continued uh uh smirking of the city standards. City standards were there for a reason and when you have a basically blank slate with borders on the side that you walk around, I just find it kind of snubbing city UDC codes. Um, I would be in favor as the um uh city has recommended to deny UDC one seventy-two and then approve the other variances. That's how I feel unless somebody would like to dissuade me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Garlock. Commissioner Madden.
Um, I uh I feel very similarly and I think that applicant's own words as they made this presentation that they basically made a minimal attempt to meet urban thoroughfare standards by their own account. This is an internally-focused suburban development, auto-oriented with standalone pad sites and a couple of offices in a separate apartment complex, whether it's high-end or not. Um, theoretically, it's mixed use, but I saw nothing in the drawings that show how these people who live there are gonna walk to these fast food, fast dining, whatever the current name is. Um, so in general, I would support the staff's recommendation. If we're not gonna actually build to urban thoroughfare standards, then I don't know why we have this district. Um, I just found this whole proposal very disappointing and so um I would support the staff recommendation for this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Madden and Commissioner McGetrick.
I tend to agree that there are definitely site conditions that inhibit development on this site. Um, I'd like to ask staff a question if possible.
Go ahead.
Um, you mentioned in the report that you find that there's more than enough room for rear um or side parking or to to situate the the parking behind the buildings or to the sides of the buildings. Did you see any alternate site plans to to support that? Um, or how did you come to that conclusion?
I think staff came to that conclusion just based on the area of the overall site and um one, that it's a greenfield site, there's not significant topography on the site and uh none of these lots have been subdivided to to date. So um we're working with kind of a a blank slate in staff's opinion.
Thank you.
Alright, I'll I'll jump in real quick. Mister Umberger and then we'll get to you, Commissioner Brink. Mister Umberger, just for clarity, we're only seeing one portion of this property, right? We're not seeing the the full um plan that was presented. Are are we seeing the full? Uh i- if you could just help provide some clear down which portions of the property we are actually considering.
Sure, absolutely. And if you don't mind, I might pull up a slide from my presentation really quick.
Go right ahead.
Um, so the applicant is requesting variances for proposed Lot twenty-A, uh twenty-one E and twenty-one F. I think I've got those names right there, the the lots that are indicated with the red stars on the site plan. Um, those are specifically the areas where they've requested to have either a driveline or parking uh allowed in between the principal facade of the building and the public right of way.
Thank you, Mister Umberger. And and i- do we have any visibility? Are we able to see what these easements are? Is is that on the city's GIS or anything? I I think that would also be helpful in helping us understand options.
Sure, um, so I I haven't got a chance to look at them very closely yet, um but Ms. Masters had forwarded me uh a copy of the s- some of the easements that were uh recorded in two thousand and six and I can pull up that if you will give me just one moment.
Go right ahead and I'll I'll give my spiel here. Uh, you know, I I'm having a hard time approving this as is. Um, I understand limitations, I understand, hey, we're, we may not be able to do what we wanna do based off of the limitations of the variances and and that has complications on um our ability to to even fully utilize the U UT. And I I completely understand that and can sympathize with um the applicant on that and um, but also, this is the, this is the most C one thing I've seen in a, in a, in a UT zoning, which is kinda the opposite of. what we're trying to do, especially with our form-based zones. Um, so I'm gonna have a real hard time approving anything that's not gonna be pedestrian and street centric. Um, and so uh, it, it's hard because we're, we're only seeing a variance, we're not seeing the actual like large-scale development with whatever pedestrian infrastructure might be there. Um, i- if I'm gonna approve anything, I, you know, I definitely wanna see some pedestrian interactions with, with mixed materials that highlight the pedestrian interactions to the buildings themselves. Um, would love to see any other pedestrian and streetscape interaction that we can get uh, other than uh, denser landscaping on a shorter piece of grass, because we're also potentially granting a variance to the width of the landscape itself. So not only are we getting um, you know, a, a smaller landscape buffer, but we're also getting a, a traditional um, you know, suburban sprawl style, street infrastructure or parking infrastructure. So I, I, I need to see something that, that at least acts as a compromiser, shows some interaction that's different for me to approve this. Now, uh, we're a body of, of eight this evening, so maybe enough positive votes to pass it. Um, uh, so I, 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 I'm just stating where I'm at. So, uh, Mr. Umberger, do you have those?
Yeah, so the, the plot that you're seeing on the screen there is the easement that was recorded, uh, and this is the easement where the thirty-inch sanitary sewer line uh, runs through the middle of. It's, as far as the twenty-foot wide easements go, it is the center easement. So there's a, a twenty-foot easement on either side of, of that sort of dark gray line.
Okay, that's helpful.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I do also have a plot that shows all three easements and when they were dedicated, if you'd like me to show.
That would be perfect, yeah, that would, I mean, eh, because if one of these is one that we can't even, uh, the applicant can't even consider vacating, uh, even to get from sixty to forty.
So there, um, the first one or the westernmost was dedicated, it's a water and sewer easement. And then there's an additional twenty-foot water and sewer easement that was dedicated in two thousand and six. And then this third easement uh, was dedicated per this plot, which was plotted in two thousand and eight. That's a general utility easement.
Okay, so two city easements and a general utility easement? Okay, yeah, that's a challenge. Um, let's go to Commissioner Brink and then we'll go to Commissioner Canada.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I kinda along the lines of, of you, uh, Chair Johnson, I, I, I generally, um, I, I like connectivity, you know, within the development and, you know, north-south, um, you know, trying to get from one place to the other. But along, you know, Commissioner Winston's point, I, I don't know that there's a better, a better use, uh, at least on the northernmost lot. Um, I, for me, because I can see kind of what it looks like as opposed to the other lots that may or may not be quick service. Um, I think as it stands, I'm, I'm generally in favor of, of the motion. Um, I think there's just, I think the easements create a, a challenge. I, I, I don't know, I can't personally come up with a good solution to uh, to mitigate that.
Thank you, Commissioner Brink. Commissioner Canada?
I'll make my comment short. Um, I will not be voting in favor of the motion as it stands. I agree with staff's comments and comments laid forth by Commissioner Garlock, Madden and um, Mr. Chair, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Canada. Commissioner Holcomb?
Commissioner Canada said basically exactly what I was gonna say, so I, I agree with staff's comments on this one.
All right, uh, we do have a motion on the table. Um, we, and it, we're open to more discussion, so Commissioner Winston?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just like curious, uh, what, what would be in this sixty-foot wide unbuildable zone other than parking? I don't, I don't know what, what do you, would, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what this commission is asking these people to show you. I don't get it.
Yeah, I, I can only speak for myself. Uh, eh, I feel like we're seeing an incomplete plan, right? Like I, I don't know what else is there. What I'm seeing in these base conceptual plans is Greg Street, seven-foot, uh, you know, maybe a sidewalk. It's, it's hard to determine what that is. Maybe it's just the curb. And then a, you know, a landscape easement or center and then parking lot. And so not being able to see a, a more robust pedestrian interaction. I mean, we're connecting to the trail on multiple sides here, have ability to connect to our trail infrastructure. Um, our, our whole uptown area is changing. We saw that two weeks ago. Um, we saw the conceptual plan for the broader, uh, basically everything west of Greg Street. Um, so, so we think about the pedestrian connectivity, as we think about its interaction with the streetscape. All I'm seeing is a parking lot being built and an easement in the UT between the street and the building. So to me, that, that's a red flag and I understand that, but completely understand the limitations, completely understand um, that that creates a situation where the scale of the property is reduced to the point that it, maybe it shouldn't be UT, maybe it should be CS or, or, you know, something else. Um, definitely don't wanna see uh, like C-one or C-two here because of the fact that it's almost entirely in the floodplain and only get those buildings as far away from the floodplain as possible. So me personally, I, I think it would be helpful just to see, hey, here's, if there's gonna be a ten-foot trail, here's where that's at. If there's gonna be, um, you know, I, I wanna know how pedestrians are actually getting from whatever pedestrian interactions are at between the street and the buildings to the physical buildings themselves. Make it, eh, I don't know, I think of some, I'm trying to think of some examples I've seen around town or even in other metropolitan areas where, you know, was kind of have a, you know, a, a, a broader pedestrian plaza that connects the main sidewalk to the building and it's, you know, it has a different color and pavement or, or different material. So it's, at least gives a little more feel of, of not being auto-centric. Um, cause I, I, I'm gonna say the same things when we see this QSR and, and we've done this in other parts of town where it's form-based zone, we bring in a restaurant with a drive-through and we require a door and a walkway that's clearly identifiable um, from the streetscape to the building itself. So it's not just this blocked-off, green space, drive-through lane, building with only a drive-through window, right? So I, I, I think that's, that's pretty clear in the code and, and eh, to me, that would be a good compromise. But I, I don't, I don't know where everyone else stands. Um, but we'll go to Commissioner Madden real quick with her hand up and go from there.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I just think there, it's not our job from the dais to try to redesign the site plan. Um, it always gets us in trouble. We can make recommendations, as I stated. My, my concern is this, this seems to be, you know, waving a white flag of surrender and saying, oh, because this easement, there's nothing else we can do except put giant parking circling around every building on all four sides. I mean, that's what I saw, buildings sitting in the middle of parking lots, um, that has nothing to do with urban, it has nothing to do with pedestrian. Um, you know, we, uh, the question was asked, did staff see any alternative to designs? Eh, no, we, we had an applicant who came in who said this is the only way we can develop this property. Um, as I said, it, it's, that, that's my concern. Uh, one thing says it's fifty-plus, but then they didn't mention that. But they said this is an internally focused development, all the pedestrian stuff is gonna be for people inside the development. Um, you know, how, how does this have anything to do with the larger Fayetteville community? Um, they, they told us what it is. They said this is suburban, this is continuing what we've got over, you know, across the way on Van Ash and it, they, they, they described exactly what it is. And it just seems like our aspirations eh, for the city of Fayetteville need to be a bit higher than that. And if they're limited, you know, maybe it needs to be taller and use less of the site. I don't have any problem with the intensity. Um, you know, we've seen proposals in this area where people are getting away from surface and saying, we're going up, we're going intense, we're gonna go uh, to structured parking. There seems to be any number of possible ways to go and we're being delivered one and saying, this is the only thing we can do with this site. Um, that's my perspective.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
There has been some uh, discussion about the, the hardship on the site, but I wanted to read the rest of the, the requirements for variances. Um, and it says that uh, the planning commission may grant a variance on a temporary or permanent basis so that substantial justice may be done and the public interest served, provided that the variation will not have the effect of nullifying the intent and purpose of the development or parking and loading regulations. So I think uh, you know, certainly there's some hardship, uh, but I think the argument that some are making that, that this would nullify the intent of the zoning code are certainly valid.
Thank you, Mr. Pennington. Commissioner Winston?
Mr. Chair, um, my concern is, is that uh, um, that we're, if we deny this variance tonight, that we don't get an opportunity to see uh, uh, any connections, any um, you know, uh, doors facing the streets, any other plans? That we've just shut the door on this whole portion of this development and uh, and um, simply because we feel we don't have enough information, right? And um, so it makes a lot more sense to me to uh, not shut that door yet and, and, and allow an opportunity for uh, more information to come to us. We have more to go on. If we need more information, let's get more information. And uh, um, you know, I mean, I can count, eh, my, my motion's not gonna pass. So I would like to propose, well, I'd like to ask, ask the, the, the applicant um, if uh, if a tabling would, would be something that you'd be looking for? If, and if you could uh, bring us more information, um, and uh, and, and how much time you'd like.
And Harland's hand is also raised if, if we wanna hear, uh, Harland's hand's also raised if we wanna hear from him. We'll start with him maybe? Yep, all right, Harland, we'll start with you. Please unmute your microphone.
Yes, appreciate the opportunity. I believe uh, from the developer's standpoint, that would be a reasonable concession to table it and give us a chance to respond to your concerns. It's not that we turned our back on the urban thoroughfare district. It's just the site itself was dictating how that development was taking shape. We tried every effort internally to meet those criteria. But obviously, as has been pointed out, the uh, easement is a significant, significant hindrance to that. So uh, we would like to um, agree to the tabling, at least from our standpoint, give our designers a chance to respond to your concerns and hopefully better that development to meet your um, recommendations.
And for clarity, would, is two weeks enough time? Would, would four weeks be enough time or upcoming meetings are the eighth and the twenty-second of August?
I believe the twenty-second would probably give us ample time. The eighth may be a little short for us to put together an approach and develop the drawings.
Okay, thank you. Sir, did you have anything else you'd like to add? Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, we don't have a motion at table, just, just to, to be clear. Um, Commissioner Winston, you saw the floor if you have anything else.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to table this item to the meeting of the twenty-second of August.
Mr. Chair, I'll second.
All right, so a motion table from Commissioner Winston and a second from Commissioner Brink on VAR twenty-two zero forty-two uh, to table to the August twenty-second meeting. Uh, Commissioner Brink, I, I saw you turn your mic on earlier. Did you have any other comments?
No, sir.
Okay, um, eh, eh, I think uh, Commissioner Madden pulled out a good call and we probably shouldn't be dictating design changes from um, from our, our spots here. But uh, it, I think it's just for me, it's gonna be helpful uh, that the applicant just provide some pedestrian interactions, show some more detail um, going from, from Greg Street to the building to help me un- understand. That may not be the same for some of the other commissioners. So if there is any other comments um, for the applicant, I think right now would be a good time for them before we get the vote. Commissioner Garlock?
Thank you. Uh, the, one of the commissioners has brought up, what do you do with this property? Well, when you buy a property, know the confines of the property. If there's a creek running through it, kind of wipe out maybe that part. And if you have utilities going through it, it may not be the best use. Um, you have pretty much a blank state in the UDC codes. I'd like to see something really positive out of it. Do you need anything specific from us? Because uh,
Point, point of clarification, wha- what, what topic detail you're just looking for, some of that pedestrian connectivity?
Me, me personally, yeah.
Thinking the, the way the process with the preliminary plat and again, creating the lots, getting that construction started, eh, then you would kind of come in with that large-scale development.
Right, yeah, and that's a tough thing, right? So we're, we're not seeing the large-scale developments. For me personally, and I'm just talking about me, there's several else that, that both, you know, voiced their um, opinions towards this. I think that would help me be willing to grant this type of variance if I saw some, some strong pedestrian interactions, maybe some breaks uh, in the parking lot that showed folks from sidewalk to, you know, having pedestrian walks up to the building, things like that. Maybe some, some kind of um, you know, interactions that meet the intent of the code. That's me personally.
Again, I guess I was gonna say, we, we do have that. Again, there's, there's sidewalk along Greg and Van Ash and we have connectivity
Yeah.
on, on both of those places and like I said, through the middle of the site. Um, eh, and again, the trail access to the, at the southeast corner. Uh, there's also another trail access just north of the property, north of the, the station.
Okay.
I do believe, um, that's in, in public right of way off that sidewalk on Greg.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful for me, but eh, I'll let some of my other commissioners voice eh, what they might, may like to see. It sounds like Commissioner Garlock, if, if you'll just reiterate your.
It was the same type of thing. You see this apartments and then you're gonna put in these restaurants and no way to walk down to them, but you want, you, you know you're gonna have all these cars because we're in suburbia. And that's just the frustration of, of people that, you know, you wanna be able to say, okay, we're gonna walk down to this. And with that big piece of seventeen acres, there should be some design and shouldn't have to always add. I guess it hurts, irks me when people get these properties, they, and then they come back and have to have all these variances. Uh, maybe I'm the only one, I'm not a civil engineer, but I just don't see that uh, when you have a, a slate of a property, that you have to come in with uh, those things. So that's what I would like to see is less variances and good design in, in urban.
No, if, and you just spilled all your water everywhere. All right, well, eh, eh, we'll have to call you up. It's not a, it's not a, just an invitation back and forth, but eh, sir, sir, we're giving you the opportunity. I'm just letting you know the rules. Our bylaws are after the time the applicant's period is closed, you have to be invited back up. We've been, we, we have invited you up, but right now it's until we have a question, um, you, you're there until then. So we're not trying to silence you, eh, we just have to have ordering procedures in a public meeting. Thank you. Commissioner Garlock, did you have anything else?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, do we have any other comments from the staff or would anybody else like to hear from the applicant's team?
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with hearing from the rest of the applicant's team if they have anything to add.
Okay, sir, or yeah, e- either one, whoever wants to talk, yeah.
I was just gonna say again, there's existing sidewalk along Greg here. Uh, we do have connectivity, you know, kind of coming up each of these drives and then down the center. Uh, we are also proposing a, a transit stop. Uh, we spoke with Ozark Regional uh, to, to get a transit stop here. And like I said, again, we've got some sidewalk coming from Greg internally here, but again, getting folks from the multifamily down to each of these parcels, uh, we've got access there. I think we have sidewalk on both sides of this entrance drive here and then again, of course, there's the, the trail easement that we're proposing and so.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, yeah, you're good, okay. Okay, Commissioner Brink?
Eh, I guess this is a question for applicant, are, are those sidewalks intended to be ri-
I guess this is a question for applicant. Are those sidewalks intended to be right up next to the road? Or is there going to be some, I guess, setback from the road for the sidewalks? Just thinking about some kind of buffering between, you know, vehicles running forty-five, fifty-five, maybe sixty on a Sunday. Just something that folks can feel a little bit safer walking across there.
Yeah, again, I think we we hope no one's driving that fast on that internal drive. But yeah, there is, I want to say there's a five foot off the on the eastern side of that road. There's five foot and then the sidewalk, again, then some additional green space on the on the west side. That's all green space. We, again, we have public water and sewer kind of running in that access easement. We have moved those in under the pavement so that you, you know, so that's all encompassed in a forty-foot access easement, utility easement. So that you would have some green space on both east and west of that internal road.
Yeah, I guess my question was more along, excuse me, Greg, not necessarily internals. I understand there's, you know, constraints within the.
Again, the the Greg down by the Van Nuys intersection, that is off the back of the curb. But there's a point, I don't know if you got an aerial, Ryan, I don't know if you. There's a point about midway in the property where that sidewalk on the north end comes all the way back against the curb. And I think that's where, again, we had twenty-three feet from the edge of that curb on the north side or back of the sidewalk, I'm sorry, to the proposed parking. And again, I think that's where we would definitely be able to add some additional landscaping if if we can put it in the right of way. Yeah, we'd be happy to work with the city on where we can put that. There's, I I believe there may be phone line and communication line or power line in there in that right of way. So again, if we can work around that, definitely.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, does that alleviate any of your your concerns seeing that?
Yeah, Mr. Umberger, we leave this up. Typically, and I can think, because we've run into this issue in other places in the city. If this building, we'll we'll take this multifamily was built in actually, you know, the actual intention of the zoning, not only would it be up in the built-to-zone, but there would be multiple pedestrian access points along the the front facade of that building accessing the streetscape, correct?
Correct. For for multifamily dwellings, each of the ground floor, each of the ground floor units are required to have a pedestrian connection from the public sidewalk to the units themselves. Is that the?
That's exactly what I'm I'm trying to bring up. And that's what's missing, right? Like now they just dump into this parking lot and this parking lot abuts. You know, some sidewalk that's separated by a a green space. Or, and like this is just me, this is my my, I feel like my soapbox. You know, I I want other commissioners to voice what changes they want to see. But to me, that's like the number one, like, example of why this isn't meeting our our zoning requirements is that i- if this, say that easement wasn't there and this building was up against, you know, Greg or in the built-to-zone with Greg, you would see several sidewalks connecting the Greg Street sidewalk to the actual units. And that, so that's just an example of a compromise that could work to help. Or even, and like I said, I mean, show there's some, show there's some crosswalks through that parking lot to Greg. All we're seeing is sidewalks that are are five feet off back of curb on all the entrances. There's, so if I want to access the building, I got to walk all the way down to the next curb cut. Or I cut through the grass, right? I don't know what landscaping you're going to put, but make it a little more pedestrian friendly across the whole thing. Same thing with the parcels to the east or the south themselves. It's 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 not like you can walk out of one and walk to the next. You gotta walk all the way down to the curb cut. If you're going to walk on the sidewalk, walk down the sidewalk and then walk back up. You know, you understand what I'm saying?
Are you ones, the parcels to the south, you have the first maxes to the rear of that?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we're going to require that. There's going to be a door that's required by code to be facing the street with a pedestrian entrance. If not, you're going to be coming back and requesting variances. And and what we don't want to see is every single piece of development come through with three or four variances because it's not meeting the zoning code intent. And that's what we're not seeing. And I could be wrong, Mr. Umberger, we'll just take parcel, this parcel immediately to the south. Correct? If you if you don't mind just zooming just a little bit over parcel A. By code, they're they're going to have to have a door facing the street, right? And and I know we're just seeing like a site plan, but I think that's the issue is in the site plan, we're seeing multiple code violations. There were required variances. And so, yes, we're we're potentially approving a variance for three properties. But we're seeing a handful of other variances that are going to be coming to us. And so it feels like a very incomplete proposal, if that makes sense. Is it, Mr. Umberger or Ms. Masters, is that correct? Am I interpreting that correctly?
I think, if you don't mind, I think that your interpretation is correct. There are some other potential issues with this site plan that haven't been considered at this time or haven't been requested of the applicant. I think you you hit the nail on the head with, yes, the fronts would be required to have front doors leading to the sidewalk. Per our parking lot design standards, there are typically pedestrian connections that have to be made directly from the sidewalk to the building's frontage as well. So I think, you know, the the site plan hasn't been evaluated for these, it hasn't been submitted yet. They're just requesting these few variances out front. So I think if you have, you know, we have, we haven't reviewed this site plan yet for for all code requirements.
Right. And and I completely understand. And we understand that, right? This this is a very specific variance request across three parcels. But I think we ha, at least in my mind, we have to view this collectively. If we're gonna if we're gonna eliminate eliminate strong pedestrian and street scape interaction, we need to know that a at least across the the parcels where it does make sense to have those that that's going to happen and it's going to be insured. And so it, you know, if if I looked at this and saw, hey, you know, eighty percent is compliant and we're doing this variance on twenty percent, to me, that feels like a co, a good, healthy compromise versus us giving up the twenty percent and then not seeing anything else right on the other eighty percent. So and and I understand that we're not looking at a large scale development. We're not looking at the full site plan. But if we're going to make some of these variances, we have to think of it through the context of the entire site. And that's that's where we're at. So that's where I'm at, at least. We do have a motion to table to August twenty-second. Do we have any other comments? I think Commissioner Madden, I see your hand up, sorry.
Well, I think you you said more eloquently than what I said earlier. But when I was looking at this with all the different parcels and, as I said, with parking around it and lacking the internal connection, it and and I recently, we had another project and and I said this, what what I get worried about is we grant variances and then they back us into having to grant more variances as we move ahead. All because it's a domino effect as we we go through the whole proposal. So, yeah, I just, what we saw today, even if it was outside of variances, was really an internally focused suburban development, not connected to a larger community, not looking at pedestrian connectivity. Just, I I think we've given the applicant a lot of things to reconsider as they move forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Madden. Anything else before we go to the vote? See no additional comments? Ms. Masters, will you please call the vote?
Just to confirm, I have that this is a motion to table until August twenty-second.
That is correct, yes.
Thank you. Johnson?
Yes.
Garlock?
Yes.
Madden?
Yes.
Holcomb?
Yes.
Brink?
Yes.
McGetrick? Yes. Winston?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Motion to table carries.
Thank you, Ms. Masters. Our next item of new business is PPL twenty twenty-two zeros four. It's a preliminary plat submitted by Jorgensen and Associates for property located southwest of West Persimmon and North Rupel Road. Property is owned CS Community Services and RA Residential Agricultural and contains thirty-five point two acres. The request is for a preliminary plat of fifty-four residential lots and one lot for detention and community spaces. And Ms. Masters has her staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the project in front of you today, it is in West Fayetteville. It's immediately to the southwest of Owl Creek School along North Rupel Road. It contains approximately thirty-five point two acres and it is currently undeveloped. In twenty fifteen, the property was rezoned to CS Community Services and RA Residential Agriculture. Let me make that full screen here for you. And that was actually a city-initiated rezoning effort that was brought forth in conjunction with the redevelopment of North Rupel Road. More recently, an additional rezoning was brought forward to rezone five point three acres from RA to CS and point four eight acres from CS to RA. And that was ultimately approved by city council earlier this year. The property is located within the floodplain and it does contain a protected stream. So the request for your consideration this evening is the applicant is proposing a subdivision with fifty-four residential lots and one lot for detention, pond, clubhouse and open space. The applicant is requesting two variances. The first is to block lengths and connectivity. Residential link streets are required to have intersections at a minimum of six hundred and sixty feet. The applicant is requesting one circular continuous loop street throughout the development. The other variance they're requesting today is that construction of all interior streets must meet the master street plan standards. The applicant is requesting an alternative residential link street in basically where the property enters from Rupel Road up until this portion of lot where lot thirty-nine is met on that street. So as far as right-of-way to be dedicated, the applicant is proposing, again, that one internal street is labeled as Street A throughout the development on one loop. They are proposing to dedicate forty-two feet of right-of-way, again, at this first entry point here at its tie-in with North Rupel Road until lot thirty-nine. The street then transitions into a typical residential link street with fifty-two feet of right-of-way for the remainder of that loop. No additional right-of-way would be required along the North Rupel Road frontage as there is already adequate right-of-way to meet the master street plan. We are recommending in favor of the applicant's proposal for reduced right-of-way dedication for that first portion on Street A. The proposed right-of-way dedication of forty-two feet will allow for adequate space for the proposed use of the alternative residential link street. So we are recommending also in favor of the applicant's proposed street section at that location to use the alternative residential link street in areas outside of the hillside, hilltop, overlay district. It does require planning commission approval. One of the applicable reasons for consideration of that alternative residential link street explicitly states that when there are environmental reasons, when no other section is applicable. So the reason that the applicant is requesting that narrower street scape with sidewalk only on one side of the street is to try to keep the street out of the floodplain. So we are recommending in favor there. We are recommending as a condition of that approval that a pedestrian crossing be added here in between lots thirty-nine and lot six. So that a pedestrian could potentially have access to sidewalk throughout the length of that portion of the street. For the remainder of Street A, again, we are, they are showing typical master street plan standards with six-foot sidewalk, six-foot green space, one and a half foot curbs and gutter and seven-foot parking lane on one side of the street and two drivelines. We are also requiring streetlights and street trees to be planted in accordance with our code. In addition to those street improvements, staff is also recommending a multi-use trail be constructed in where there is currently shown a dedicated multi-use trail easement. We are recommending that that be a twelve-foot multi-use trail with any associated drainage infrastructure that might be needed. So as far as block length and connectivity go, again, the applicant is requesting a variance to those standards. They're proposing one continuous loop rather than having multiple stubout connections to the adjacent properties. We are recommending in favor of this request. We do find that future street connections almost in any direction would not be feasible. The property is surrounded by floodplain and protected streams. And any connections that would be made would require crossings to either already developed land such as to the south west here or low-lying floodplain or to Owl Creek School to the northeast. We do recommend that with a proposed dedicated multi-use trail easement and trail construction to the north, we are recommending that the applicant add an additional pedestrian connection in between lots seventeen and eighteen here to connect up to that proposed trail so that we do still get some level of added connectivity, even though they are requesting these variances. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board did review this proposal at a meeting held on January third, twenty twenty-two. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board recommended parkland dedication in the amount of one point two four acres based on the number of proposed single-family lots. Those parks fees would be due prior to the building permit issuance. I also did, we did receive some public comment in opposition to the request. And the Parks Department did issue this, submit this map for the planning commission's consideration in between subdivision committee and today. So the, some of the concerns were about how parkland dedication had been allocated with the subdivision to the southwest. And so the Parks Department did put together this map for the commission's consideration on how parkland dedication had been accounted for throughout the years in in this general area. I don't believe Zach Foster, who created this information, is available for questions, but I can try to answer any additional questions you might have about that. So there were so, yeah, again, as as far as the public comment goes, we did receive, we did receive some that were mostly in opposition to the request. The concerns that we received were concerns about flooding in the issue or flooding in the area, issues with the developer themselves. And then again, those concerned about concerns about parkland dedication requirements for that adjacent development. Some of the concern concerns about the issues with the developer were about how the property was being marketed in that the adjacent property was was marketed as it was never going to be developed. I believe that that's the nature of the concern. So with that, we are recommending in favor of the project tonight. We are recommending that the preliminary plat do receive approval this evening with conditions as recommended by staff. And with that, I can answer any additional questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Masters, and thank you for bringing up the parkland dedication map. As I think there was some confusion at subdivision committee. Next, we'll hear from the applicant. Is the applicant here present able to speak to this item? All right, Mr. Jorgensen.
Yeah, good evening. Justin Jorgensen with Jorgensen Associates. Thank you for your time this evening. I think Ms. Masters covered everything pretty much. I wanted to clarify or talk about the parks and how this all started back in I think it was two thousand and fifteen and we worked with the Parks Board extensively on that the master plan for this area and what their needs were. And mainly it was start at Broyles and get a connection over to Rupel Road. And throughout the years, they're up to, I believe, twenty acres of parkland dedication in this area. So we've worked a lot with them. This is their desire and be glad to answer any other questions you guys might have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jorgensen. Next, we'll open up to the public. If any members of the public would like to speak to this item, we ask that you raise your virtual hand or step up to the podium. We will hear from the folks in in person. We do have someone online that we'll hear from first and then we'll go in person. So we'll start with Robert Kalin. Robert, if you would, please unmute your microphone. State your name and address, anything else you'd like us to know.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I live in the Slumbrook Brook edition here. And, you know, the concerns that the residents here have is that, yeah, it was marketed that nobody would be back there. There would be nothing built back behind that was, it was going to be a park and then trails, which that's great. And the concerns that I have are, number one, as far as like housing, we bought it mainly because we wouldn't, it's almost like it with with the trees that would be removed and I understand not all of them would. But it does cause a concern with watershed coming over. And I'm actually looking at it now and I'm in zone AE and half of my house is in it now. and half of my house is in it now. My concern is that if the elevation of the property over there where the new subdivisions going in, it's going to shove more water to the south and that poses a concern. And I know there's been flood studies and things like that. You can put anything on paper, but when you're actually out here looking at it, when we have heavy rains, it's a concern of mine. And I don't, you know, I know it talks about the Hundred Year Flood and I don't know when the last one was and I don't know when the next one will be. It could be in five years and if that's the case, I'm in trouble here. And I'm opposed to it, not against as far as like developing it. My main concern is the flooding issue. And that's all I have for now. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Will you please say your name and address for the record?
Robert Kalin and I live at four four seven four West Oldham Drive.
All right. Thank you. I, I don't see any other, uh, common folks. So if you're here in person, please step up to the podium, uh, state your name, address, and after three minutes of additional comments.
Uh, my name is Christopher Whitson. Address is four four six six West Oldham Drive. I'm actually Robert's next door neighbor. Um, I was wondering if it would be possible to show the photos that were sent in the email by, um, Veronica, I believe it was.
Yeah, Ms. Masters, I, I did see those earlier. Um, we're open to putting those up. Thank you.
I think that might be germane to the comments I'm gonna make. Um, and actually you could, yeah, I guess you could use mine as well.
Uh, Mr. Whitson, go ahead and continue on with your comments and we'll get those up.
A minute here. Um, so, so the start of my comments, I, and I'll have to condense down because I thought we were gonna have a ten-minute period. That's the city council. Um, so my commentary relative to the, the flooding question, which I think is central to the, to the resistance to this development is that, um, w- with all due respect to flood plans and, and the apparent flood investigation that's been made for this plat that's being proposed, um, in the photos that you're going to see, I mean, what you see in that photo and, and really her photos are better because the water actually in the event that she pictured, in actually intrudes into her yard. Essentially, the entirety of this plat is located in a floodplain, as has been previously mentioned. In the city's, um, commentary on this subject, they note that fact and they note the, the plat and where it infringes that. My concern here is that any displacement of water that happens within this floodplain at all has the potential to push the boundary of that flood area that's designated in the flood map directly into our properties. I mean, on an annual basis, the photo that you see there is probably lower than what I, what we will see at the back of our three houses since the three comments that we're talking about here are all adjacent houses. Uh, that water backs up all the way to our property. So I have deep concern about the size of this development, especially where it concerns its intrusion directly to the controlled, uh, waterway that's back there. As I say, any, any further displacement of water is going to place any of that directly in there. Uh, and this speaks nothing to the marketing claims made, made to Riverwood or made by Riverwood over the years about the process of this. I, I would al- also like to make a comment about the fact that, um, from my understanding, when Riverwood initially had this rezon years ago, it was their pledge to the city as well that, that the corridor here while, while ecologically and environmentally sensitive, um, they had, I thought initially pledged that they would not be developing this area. In addition to that, as they came back to do the rezon, my understanding is that they had a different plan, um, some, some enter of retirement community that was requested for the rezon at that time. Um, and so there seems to be a, an evolution of what they've asked to do, which it seems to amount to an end run about the desires of the council. Even the council commented at the most recent rezon that this doesn't seem to fit with the twenty forty plan that it, uh, I forget what the specific comment is and that it, it was also of concern that this development sits or the plan development sits inside an ecologically and environmentally sensitive corridor. So I, I think at its
Thirty seconds remaining.
Uh, there are, there are a few things that I would ask this council or excuse me, this commission to review. First, and namely, the, the flood map that has been developed, I would accept, I would ask for a re-review if nothing, absolutely nothing else and relative to the size of, of this development. Um, and if we're not going to stop this development, um, I think some care should be taken to examine how this is going to further impact residents in this area. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other additional, uh, in-person comments? Yes, if you would, please step up to the podium, state your name, address, anything else you'd like us to know?
Yes, good evening. My name is Eric Leclair. Um, I'm at forty-four fifty West Oldham, just a couple houses up from him. And I don't have much to add. I just wanted to be here to voice my opposition to this for a lot of the same reasons, the flooding and the promises that were made when we bought that house and that lot, that it would be green behind there for as long as we lived there. Um, we have a lot of wildlife that comes back there that, um, you know, it's just, that was a big selling point for that particular piece of property. So I just wanted to add that, but that's all I have.
Thank you. Do I have any additional public comments? Yes, please. All right. Just your name, your address, and three minutes of additional comment.
I'm Mark. Mark Whistler with Riverwood Homes. Um, we were the original developer there. This piece of property was never part of the Sloane Brook Master Plan subdivision. If anybody saw it or, or went back to the records, I think Justin, uh, has the master plan that was all the, uh, set up for Sloane Brook. The misinformation that people are taking from this is that I didn't own this land. I bought, I'm under contract for this as a total different parcel and we dedicated, as you'll see on that parkland, almost twenty acres through Sloane Brook, uh, going down through the creeks, uh, in conjunction with the city, uh, Parks Department with their intention of developing a trail from Rupel to Broyles. So all of that was put in on day one. It's still on our plat showing where that green belt is. Mr. McBride owns this piece of property, or most of it. We have about three acres we ended up with. But we have done extensive studies. This is a low-density, uh, subdivision in the fact that it's gonna be age, uh, targeted for fifty-five plus. Now, we're not going to restrict it, but it's gonna be targeted for that clientele because primarily every home in there is gonna be low-impact cars. You've got Catherine's Place right down the street and Boys and Girls Club, uh, beside it as well. And we've really had a request for the fifty-five and older to be able to stay in place in their homes. Um, these will be maintained with mowing, all maintenance. If one has to go to Catherine's Place, the other can be close. Uh, so it's a very, um, low-impact from the driving. It's very low-impact from the schools. Again, I'm not going to sit here and say that every home's gonna be fifty-five plus, but the way they're designed and the way they're built, they're really targeted for that kind of a community. So again, I apologize if, uh, talked too much and, uh, open for any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you. Any additional public comments? All right. With that, I'll turn it over to the commission commissioners. Actually, uh, as we get started, Mr. Pennington, uh, this one gets a little tricky. If you could remind us of what we're allowed to, um, consider when considering a preliminary plat, uh, especially in regards to zoning or flooding issues and the floodway itself.
I should have had that pulled up.
We can come back to you if you like.
Can you give me a second?
Yeah, that'd be right. I'll, I'll turn it over to the commission commissioners. Mr. Canada.
Um, barring, uh, the flooding, um, uh, the flooding that we've heard, um, for me personally, in terms of the rapport, I'm pretty much in line with staff's recommendations, but, um, that's pretty much all I have for now. Just waiting to hear what Mr. Pennington has to say.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McGetrick.
I have a quick question for engineering if possible.
It looks like we have Josh Picaccio, uh, on hand if, if, uh,
Yep, thanks. Um, Josh, you mentioned in your report that, uh, wetlands delineation would be required. Did you receive that or are there any wetlands present on site?
I've not received that. That would typically be something that we would require prior to, uh, grading permit issuance. So the next stage after this would be a grading permit review and that's where we get into, uh, to the, the specifics, uh, in the weeds as far as hydroric soils, potential wetlands. Um, if there are jurisdictional wetlands on site, uh, then, uh, obviously that would have to comply with any sort of uh, core permitting, uh, or Section four four, four one permitting to, to alter those wetlands.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Mr. Pennington?
Sure. So, um, the preliminary plats are subject to approval or denial based on six reasons. Uh, one, the plat or development plan is not submitted in accordance with the requirements of the chapter. Two, the proposed development would violate a city ordinance, a state statute, or a federal statute. Three, the developer refuses to dedicate the street right-of-way utility easements or drainage easements required by this chapter. Four, the proposed development would create or compound a dangerous traffic condition. Five, city water and sewer is not readily available. Uh, and six, the developer refused to comply with ordinance requirements or conditions of approval for onsite and offsite improvements. Uh, and I would note that, that it would be, uh, the burden of any person claiming that a violation is occurring uh, to prove that, uh, has, that there is a violation of some kind. Uh, and it appears that staff has determined that this does meet the minimum requirements of the Unified Development Code.
Thank you, Mr. Pennington. Commissioner Bray?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, one of the things we received from public comment that I, I, excuse me, from someone that wrote in and I, I think it's a, a valuable piece, is my understanding that there's a trail connection between Lot Seventeen and Eighteen. Is that correct, Ms. Masters?
That is correct.
And is there any connection, um, as it appears, there are sidewalks that run around the internal lots, namely Lot Fifty, which is, I guess, um, adjacent to the trail connection. Is there any curb cut that was proposed there that would make access to the trail from the internal street or the internal lots any easier?
I think you're asking whether, uh, like a pedestrian crossing
Yes.
was, um, I think we did include that as a condition of approval. Uh, I failed to, I think I failed to mention that in my presentation, but I believe that is in the report that we would like to see, uh, pedestrian crossing and also potentially, uh, some street narrowing if possible at those moments of pedestrian crossing. So that would be, uh, between Lot Six and Thirty-nine and also between Lot Seventeen and Eighteen, uh, at that location.
Correct. But what about at Lot Fif- basically I'm asking if there's a, if there could be a wrong tense, a curb cut at Lot Fifty?
Um, I don't think we, uh, wrote that in, but you could certainly add it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think overall, like, I, I like the development. Um, is, is, it seems the applicant's come up. Is that, is that something that's, that's doable or that's in there?
Yeah, sure. It's in there. And, and so what's not shown on here is a trail, the twelve-foot trail that's basically in the, the, that, that, exactly right there. So the intent is that they can connect to that trail and in the future it will go all the way to Broyles. Um, so internally, we have numerous curb cuts, um, and sidewalks, and then of course the trail that you guys were just referencing. Now, when, and we also have a trail that is near, near the pond. Um, if you can zoom in there, Jesse, by any chance? Yes, correct, right there. And when you mentioned a curb cut, is that what you were asking about?
Yeah, basically just a, a leveling of the, of the internal sidewalk. So basically if you're looking at, um, lots, blurry for me, um, lots forty-nine and fifty. Basically, I just wanna connect to the trails from the internal lots
Yes.
to the other, to the other trails.
And we'll have more detail when the construction plans come through.
Okay.
But that is the intent.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify. I, I saw that as a, as a comment from somebody I thought is a, a really good idea.
Sure, yes, sir.
All right. Commissioner Canada, and then we'll go to Commissioner McGetrick.
I had a question for Mr. Pennington from, so from everything you outlined, this project meets the minimum requirements.
Uh, I think that's staff's determination. That was my interpretation of, of the staff report.
Okay, um, my big thing is as we consider items, um, when we're, when we're considering it and whether we vote yes or no, there are a lot of times that even if we may not like the item, um, at the end of the day, we have to vote in line with what we are able to consider. And based off of staff's determination, um, for all six conditions, um, listed, uh, I recommend, uh, approval of PPL twenty twenty-two zeros four with all conditions, um, determined by staff.
A second.
And, uh, Ms. Masters, will, will he have to say all the in favors of the variances or was his motion good enough?
That would be preferred.
Okay. If you could just read off.
I'll talk more. Um, I move to approve PPL twenty twenty-two zeros four determining in favor of requested variance to block length minimum in favor of requested variance to master street plan standards, in favor of recommended right-of-way dedication, in favor of recommended street improvements, and all other conditions as outlined by staff.
Ms. McGetrick or Commissioner McGetrick, does your second still stand?
It does.
Yeah. And did you have anything else to add from earlier?
I did have one question for Mr. Jorgensen if possible.
Go right ahead.
Absolutely.
Will these buildings be sprinkled or I know that there is a fire code provision. It looks like, cause there's a lack of connectivity and there's only one ingress egress for the neighborhood. Um, how are you proposing to, um, get around that fire code requirement?
Each one will be sprinkled.
Okay. That was my only question. Thank you.
Commissioner Garlock?
Thank you very much. Um, I had the opportunity this Sunday to walk around the complete property. Um, one concern with regard to traffic regarding the right in and out on Rupel. I'd be interested in engineering's thoughts about the impact, the proposed intersection, whether it's safe and effective, um, being that it's a, a component of the edge of the Mears Block or the Mears, uh, Mears Box. Do we have anybody from, uh, traffic that could come in on a right in, right out of a place by a, um, school uh, with no northern connection other than going down south and going around the spinaround and going back up north? Who would you recommend that we could ask about that traffic concern?
I believe, uh,
Is it Mr.?
Mr. Picaccio with engineering would be our, our resident expert tonight for that, yes.
Mr. Picaccio, could you help me understand, is that, uh, considered safe by the city of Fayetteville knowing the, uh, connection and the close proximity to the Owl Creek School? And then the school that's being built on the south part of the road that's gonna be having the increased traffic, uh, that's my main con- one of my main concerns. Could you help me there?
So it's, it's actually not just a right in, right out. Um, there, there is a right out, but there's a right in and a left in. Uh, there's currently a, a median opening along Rupel, uh, at that location. And so we've asked the applicant to configure that, uh, driveway, that straight intersection to, to configure uh, with that existing, uh, median opening. Um, so as far as left turn movements, it would be the, the vehicles going northbound along Rupel, turning into the subdivision, um, looking at, uh, the alignment of Rupel in that location. Uh, when I first reviewed it, we didn't have, uh, any, any hesitation that that would be a, be a problem. Uh, there's pretty good side distance, uh, as you get, um, as you're heading northbound on, on Rupel. Uh, there's a, there's a corner probably, uh, I'd say roughly about five hundred feet past that median break. So, uh, we, we didn't see any safety concerns with that configuration.
Okay, that was my, one of my concerns. The second concern was with environmental concerning the state and federal laws um, with regard to, um, FEMA and water quality. As I walked around there, no problem about flooding last, uh, Sunday. But, uh, with the photos that were thrown, that were shown, I do have, uh, major concerns about the floodplain and the significance in the Ill- Illinois watershed. Could you express a clear, uh, confidence that that's not gonna be an issue with flooding when there's current flooding situation?
Yeah, so our, our new ordinance, relatively new over the last year's past, uh, back in July of, of twenty-one, um, requires any sort of development in the floodplain, whether it's Zone A or Zone A E. Uh, so Zone A is, is floodplain that hasn't been studied completely. Zone A E is one that has a base flood elevation established. Um, so any development within that floodplain has to show that there's not an increase in flood has to show that there's not an increase in flood flows, flood velocities, or flood heights. In addition to providing compensatory storage, so balancing cut and fill. So any fill that is placed within the floodplain has to be mitigated onsite. So you, you balance that fill so there's a net zero effect. And so this, the applicant has shown all four of those things based on flood study that, that our flood development engineer has, has reviewed and is comfortable with. So there, I mean, you're at a confluence of two tributaries going into Isle Creek. There is an established floodplain, floodway around the site and, and behind those existing homes in the Riverwood subdivision. So by, by the nature of the environment and the area that there will be flooding, we do have requirements for floodplain development. So if you're in the floodplain, you have to build your house two feet above the hundred-year base flood elevation is one of those protections, as well as those, those four that I mentioned previously. And then as far as your other question, I realize I didn't touch on that, was the, the water quality for the Illinois watershed. The development is required to meet all four of the minimum standards in our drainage manual, and one of those is water quality. So they have to treat eighty percent of the total suspended solids of the one point two inch rainfall event. So that's, that's what's considered the first flush. So all the pollutants from driveways, roadways, parking lots will be treated in their onsite retention pond.
Perfect. So it's not going to get worse. I appreciate that detail. Also, I did get a chance to talk to Zach Foster today, and it's very, I think the connectivity of the Isle Creek Trail will probably be the gem or the crown jewel of award four. So I'm excited about having the park land finished. And since it has seemed to meet the traffic and the water quality concerns, I'd be voting for it. Thank you.
Yeah, also I wanted to
Say thank you for the people that came out today because I did walk your properties. I felt kind of weird going through the backyards of the little creek and stuff. But I, I do hope that, and believe since the city is going to say this is not going to affect the watershed, I will be voting for it.
Thank you, Commissioner Garlock. Do we have any other comments before we go to the vote? So you know, we do have a motion to approve PPL twenty twenty-two zeros four. And Ms. Masters, will you call the vote when you're ready?
Johnson?
Yes.
Garlock?
Yes.
Madden?
Yes.
Holcomb?
Yes.
Brink?
Yes.
McGetrick?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Motion to approve carries.
Thank you, Ms. Masters. Our next item of new business is PPL twenty twenty-two zero six. It's a preliminary plat submitted by Craft and Toll for property located at two, three, nine, ninety South Dead Horse Mountain Road. Property is owned RSF four residential, single-family, four units per acre. Contains approximately fifty-one point three two acres. The request is for the preliminary plat of sixty-nine residential lots and two unbuildable lots. And Ms. Masters has her staff report.
Mr. Channing Turekis, myself.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the subject property is in South Fayetteville off of South Dead Horse Mountain Road. It is just west of the Stonebridge Meadows Golf Club. It is zoned RSF four residential, single-family, four units per acre. It was previously part of the Villas at Stonebridge Planned Zoning District, which did expire in twenty fifteen. Upon that project's expiration, staff did recommend that the property revert back to its original zoning of RA Residential Agricultural. The property was eventually rezoned to its current district, which does have an associated bill of assurance, which limits the density to two and a half units per acre. In February of twenty eighteen, a preliminary plat for Meadows at Stonebridge Subdivision was approved on this property, which was not ultimately built. Another attempt at rezoning the property to a planned zoning district was ultimately denied by city council in twenty twenty-one. The property currently is rural and undeveloped in nature and encompasses approximately fifty-one point three two acres. The request before you all for consideration today is basically the first phase there in purple of a development of the first phase of a residential subdivision with sixty-nine single-family residential lots and two unbuildable lots. They have submitted variances for your consideration for the following. The first is to block length and connectivity. Residential linked streets are required to have intersections at a minimum of six hundred and sixty feet. The applicant is requesting an approximately eleven hundred an eleven hundred foot long block length along street one and approximately sixteen hundred foot block length along street seven. The applicant is also requesting a variance to the master street plan standards. The applicant is requesting that variance to locate a required eight-foot sidewalk for neighborhood linger, excuse me, for the neighborhood link street standards along Dead Horse Mountain Road with five-foot green space. They're also requesting an alternative residential link street for street seven that is located outside of the hillside hilltop overlay district. As far as right-of-way to be dedicated, the subject property does have frontage along South Dead Horse Mountain Road in two locations. Staff is recommending that right-of-way be dedicated in the amount of at least thirty-three and a half feet from center line along that frontage pursuant to the typical requirement for a neighborhood link. And then along street seven. Try to get a zoomed in image here for you. For street seven, the applicant is requesting to dedicate approximately forty feet in width of right-of-way, and that would be to accommodate the alternative residential link street section. We are recommending in favor of that request in this instance. There is a very narrow strip of land here that the applicant owns that they, and they are essentially requesting to dedicate the entirety of it to be right-of-way to accommodate that street section. This would allow for the full build-out of that alternative residential link street in the future, should the property to the north ever redevelop or, or to the south for that matter. Dedicating that entire strip of right-of-way would also allow for better coordination of street improvements in the future, should any additional development come in at this location. So again, we are recommending in favor of the use of the alternative residential link street at that location. All of the other internal links, all, excuse me, all of the other internal streets are requested to be typical, dedicated to the typical master street plan standards. We are recommending that fifty-two feet of right-of-way be dedicated for those internal streets. Going into a little bit more detail on the street improvements, on Dead Horse Mountain Road, the applicant is requesting a variance to the typical master street plan standards. It is slight in nature. Staff is somewhat in support of it, but we have some room for discussion on that. So they, we are recommending that the property's frontage be improved generally with a ten-foot green space, eight-foot sidewalk, and for the proposed sidewalk to jog around the existing power poles. So the reason the applicant requested the variance is that there are two existing, let me navigate to this page here, one moment. There are two existing overhead power poles that the applicant is hoping, they would like to shift the intact, the sidewalk in its entirety to basically center the sidewalk with five feet of green space on the west and five feet of green space on the east. We are basically recommending that they do, in fact, build the sidewalk at the back of the right-of-way and jog around the power poles where needed. So again, are recommending in favor of a variance that's slightly different than the one that the applicant is requesting. And then again, that alternative residential link street, we have discussed staff's position on that. There is also an assessment that has been brought forth. There is a temporary turnaround that will be needed to be constructed with this first phase. The applicant has provided a cost estimate of approximately thirteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-five cents, and staff is in support of that assessment. That was a piece of information that was added in between subdivision committee and this review. So did want to make sure to bring that to the commission's attention. And then finally, as far as block length and connectivity goes, we are only recommending and partially in favor of the applicant's request. So again, they're recommending, they're requesting block lengths, variances in two locations. We are recommending in favor of one. So the first location that we're recommending in favor in is along street seven. We're recommending in favor of this because we really don't see that the applicant would have any physical ability to provide a street stubout on this length of street since they, because they do not currently own the land or have any ability to provide any additional stubouts at this time. They, again, they are going to be dedicating this entire section as right-of-way. So we are generally in favor of the block length variance in this location because we just don't see that they could physically provide a stubout. Additionally, again, as a reminder, if this land were to redevelop, they would, it would operate as street right-of-way. So, and as a typical city street, so they would have the ability to make connections that did meet our city standards in the future. Or the property owner here would have that ability. The other location is really along this street one. The applicants provided reason. I did just receive notification that perhaps the audio cut out on Zoom. Sorry, if you don't mind, I'm going to just take
Yeah, we'll need to get that figured out quickly, so.
I can hear you now.
Okay, perfect. Sounds like we're good. It is eight forty-eight, and we're going to reconvene our planning commission meeting. Ms. Masters, I believe we were in the middle of your staff report. I'm not quite sure where the cutoff point was, but maybe get us back up to speed and we'll go from there.
Sure. I believe I was stopped talking somewhere around a temporary turnaround removal for a street cul-de-sac. And was talking about block length and connectivity. So again, I'll just revisit these block length and connectivity variances. The applicant is requesting those in two places. One is along street seven. The other is along street one. The reason stated by the applicant to minimize, or why they are requesting the variance along street one is to minimize the number of street stubouts to the adjacent golf club property. Typically, staff does, does find that we will support block length variance requests when, when they're, that we find them to be typically supportable when there is specific terrain, topography, existing barriers, or other unusual circumstances that create a justification. In this particular instance, we did not find that to be the case. We did see that they are showing a proposed paved trail in between lots twenty-one and twenty that we would recommend that the commission keep as a condition of approval if a block length variance is to be supported at this location. I did want to also just bring to the commission's attention that in twenty eighteen, a similar variance request was submitted by the applicant at this location. Staff did not initially support that one either, but the planning commission ultimately did vote in the applicant's favor on that one. So I just wanted to give that institutional knowledge on the previous submission on, on a similar request. With that, we, I believe that covers all of the, the essential nuance there on this one. As far as parkland is concerned, the recommendation at this time is for a fee in lieu of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars, but that would be for both phases for a hundred and twenty-eight single-family lots. Those park fees would be required prior to building permit issuance. We have received a few inquiries regarding this request. We have not received any direct comments in opposition or support at this time. And with that, I can answer any questions you might have, although I'm sorry, I realized that I missed a point here on the water and sewer system that is actually very relevant. So the applicant is proposing to install eight-inch water lines throughout the subdivision to accommodate domestic water service and fire hydrants. They're also proposing to install eight-inch sewer lines throughout the subdivision to provide sanitary sewer service to each lot. The applicant is also requesting an offsite main extension to the existing lift station on the Stonebridge Meadows Golf Course. The easement, however, that the applicant has proposed to utilize for that offsite extension is under litigation. Let's see if I can get a better image here for you, is under litigation. And if the court does find the easement to have been incorrect in such a way that a gravity sewer line cannot be installed per the city of Fayetteville specifications, the applicant shall not provide sewer service with an additional lift station or low-pressure system. It would be the applicant's responsibility to obtain the necessary easements to provide sanitary sewer to their development without an additional lift station. So that is listed as a condition of approval in this overall development. With that, we are recommending approval, subject to conditions as outlined by staff. I can answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Masters. Next, we'll hear from the applicant. It's the applicant here pressing to speak this item. Stanley, if you would, please state your name. Anything else you'd like us to know?
Yeah, good evening. I'm Tom Henley with Craft and Toll. I appreciate the time. I'm hoping this is the last time I need to bring this piece of property before you guys. I think it's the third time I've brought it, and it's probably the sixth or seventh time it's been before this body. Just a couple of things regarding the staff report. We, we have no issue with the variance request. We can add stubouts if, if you guys feel like they're appropriate. That's not a problem. We, we don't necessarily feel like, is that street L, the long one? Well, anyway, the one that goes out, the, the long street that goes out, we, we feel like that's a stubout itself. There, there's no lots along it. We don't really feel like it applies to the block length variance. And either property that could, that, that develops on either side of it can, there's no grudge strip or anything like that. They can attach to it immediately. The issue with the, the water and sewer, so we obtained that easement from the golf course owner during one of our previous submittals. And unfortunately, as things happen, and I'm sure Robert's going to expound on this, errors get made in legal documents. That was brought to our attention. We filed a scribner's error to correct it. That's been recorded at the courthouse. It's our contention that that's a legal easement that was obtained for two reasons. One of them was, obviously, because we wanted to extend the gravity sewer on one of the previous developments, which was almost identical to this one, through that easement. The other was because the existing force main that was run across the golf course was not installed within the easement that was recorded. It, it meanders all over the place, and so the easement that we had recorded served two purposes. It widened the existing easement, and it corrected and put that force main within a city easement. So the city now has the ability to, to get in there. So we got that easement approved. It's recorded at the courthouse. We don't feel like there's any, I mean, it's a, it's a legitimate scribner's error application. And, and, and if, if any of those stubouts that we're asking for variances on are needed, we're, we're happy to apply those. Everything else, I think this thing matches the zoning with the bill of assurance. You guys approved it as a PZD last time. It was ultimately voted down by council. We revised the layout to bring it within the bill of assurance under the RSF four zoning that, that the previous property owner agreed to. So with that, I can answer, I'll be available to answer any questions you guys might have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Henley. All calling. If we have any additional questions. Next, we'll open it up to the public. If any members of the public would like to speak to this item, we just ask that you either raise your virtual hand or step up to the podium. Mr. Rhodes, are you, are you here to present on behalf of the applicant or on behalf of the public?
I am definitely not here to present on behalf of the
Okay. If you would, then please state your name, address, and after three minutes of additional comment.
I'm sorry, I was slow coming up here because I thought we had people on Zoom. We were supposed to, but I guess, I guess they fell off. My name is Robert Rhodes. I'm with the law firm of Hall Estill. I know I got three minutes, so I'm going to talk fast. I represent some of the neighbors, the golf course, Stonebridge, being probably the, the most notable one is probably the, the most notable one as far as uh, as far as some of the issues. Now let me first address um what Mr. Henley said in regard to the, the second easement. I'm the one that filed the lawsuit of asking for, for a judge to declare um whether the easement was valid or not. It is not just an issue of a scribner's error. Yes, that was part of the problem. Part of the problem was that uh the, the legal description wasn't proper on it as well. Uh but also, um the prior owner signed an affidavit that I filed with this declaratory judgment um petition that says that I was told when I signed the second easement, the one that's in question, that it wasn't meant to enlarge, it was only meant to straighten it out, kinda like Tom said, it was meant to straighten it out. Well, as it turns out, it doubled the size of the easement um when, um and, and he didn't, he didn't realize that. So uh I don't think it's quite as open and shut as you just heard. Um it is still an issue. A judge will decide, and I'm hopeful that he'll decide that the easement is not valid. If the easement's not valid, then I'm not sure, you know, how you can approve a PPL. Um especially since um uh it, it, that, that part is in question. Um. Let me talk about the golf course real quick. It is a community asset. It's not just a golf course. It's been there for twenty years. It has been paying taxes. It does uh community events. Um the, the, the new owner has put a good bunch of money into it. As I reported, probably the last time I was here, definitely at city council, um they, they improved it uh immensely. So it's not going away. I mean, it, it, it's gonna stay there for as long as, 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 as people play golf, which I think is a pretty long time. With that said, I would ask you to turn down this PPL, but if you, if you, if you decide you're gonna go ahead with it, then I would ask you to eliminate, not just add, don't add any more stubouts. Please eliminate all of the stubouts. That is very detrimental to the golf course. That was the biggest, the, the biggest concern um that it, that they've had um on every um iteration of, of this project. Um. Yeah, if you'll notice on some of the um, um, some of the the documents that have been popped up there, it keeps on saying a hundred and thirty-two lots. Um a hundred and thirty-two lots is not two-point-five. A hundred and twenty-eight lots is point-two-five. So they're still not within the bill of assurance. Further, um I believe this is gonna be, there's gonna be um issues with traffic when um, when you take that road all the way, you know, the skinny piece of land, you take that all the way up to the horse mountain uh with the uh, with the mountainous or the whatever, it's gonna be, it's, it's gonna create a danger point. There's already gonna be more danger.
Three minutes has passed.
How much?
Three minutes has passed.
May I? If, if you would just, thirty seconds, close it up. Thank you.
Um anyways, it's not compatible. Um it's RA all around there for the most part. Um and I'd say one last thing. This is a, a developer that um is still using the name of our golf course. We told him eighteen months ago to quit using it. He said he would, and it's still listed as um Meadow and Stones, Stonebridge. Um I would ask you again, please turn it down. And if you don't turn it down, um please take out all the stubouts. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other additional public comments on this? With that, I'll turn it over to the commission as, as we get started. Mr. Pennington, I think it's gonna uh help us to understand our purview. Um it sounds like there is an issue with access to sewer. It's a uh one of the six tenants of uh a PPL approval. So uh help us understand, how, how do we proceed with this?
Sure. So the, the city's position is that we have no official position uh on the, the lawsuit. Uh we filed an answer last week and said, Judge, we're here to just listen to what you want to decide. Um so my advice to the commission is uh the way this application was submitted is as though the easement is valid, and I think it is appropriate for you to consider that if it is valid, then they can make this sewer connection. Uh if it is not, then they'll have to find something else. Uh so i- it, the fact that it is being litigated right now doesn't mean that you can't consider it uh in your determination.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you, sir. Um yeah, I'll turn it over to my fellow commissioners, commissioners.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Winston.
I have a question for Mr. Rhodes. Um can you, can you expound on, on uh the concerns of the stubouts for the, the golf course? What, what is it? How does it impact the golf course to have stubouts there?
The stubouts um allow people to get on the golf course. Um and, you know, it's, it's, it's not a public park. It's a, you know, it's, it's a private golf course, and they've already had issues of people with four-wheelers, what have you, um getting on there and, and I'm thinking, it just basically encourages people. One of the stubouts is right there at a pond. Um that doesn't seem, you know, appropriate and, or, 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 or safe. Um the stubouts also suggest that um, well, the golf course is going away. Um contrary to the golf course investing a whole lot of money um in their, in their golf course. Um it's just, it's um, it, it just, it, the concern is that um, is that um they'll be damaged under the golf course.
By damage, you mean mostly from people just driving right onto the golf course with four-wheelers and, and, and that sort of thing? I, I, I could definitely see that. Is there anything that uh, if those stubouts were there, that the golf course would do to um, uh, 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 uh I don't know, put a moat? Or something?
You do a lot of things and they'd have to spend money to, you know, perhaps put a fence up or what have you. So there are things that they could, it that's available, but those things cost money. They also impact, you know, I guess the beauty of, of the golf course. And um so that's.
Because at the end of these stubouts, when they're temporary like this, there's generally a big sign there.
Sign.
And, and some stop stuff and, and all that sort of, sort of s- thing. I could definitely see that. Uh is the, 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 uh, I'm not really a golfer. Um but what's the impact of, of beauty and, 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 and tranquility on the golf course?
Well, I'm, I'm a, I'm a, not a very good golfer, and so the impact of beauty and a nice walk is really important to me. Um if I was a, you know, really good golfer, maybe I wouldn't even care what it looked like. But no, I think a lot of people, when they play golf, they enjoy the beauty of the course and, and and, and at least that's what my, my clients tell me, and from my personal experience, that's true.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And uh along, along this uh, uh portion of the golf course, you know, all I get to really see is, is, is this like, you know, ten-thousand-foot-up grassy area. Um is, do you know if, what the um, um i- is the fairway right up against the, this piece of property?
Yes, yes.
Or is it, or is it more like a, like a grouse, or what do they call that, uh the?
Oh, I'm sorry, you said fairway.
Yeah.
Um, no, um but it's close enough.
It's close enough. It's visibly, it's right there.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And this, al- also, this is gonna put impervious um, you know, ground and lead to flooding as well. More, more flooding than they already have.
Uh, does the uh, uh, does this property uh drain onto the golf course, or is it the other way around? Any idea there?
You know, I don't.
Yeah.
I defer to that.
If Mr. Henley had an answer to that one, I, I would wanna hear that as well.
Pardon?
Uh if Mr. Henley had an answer to that, I'll, I'll call him up in a minute. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. And Mr. Henley, uh can, can you tell me about how these two things drain? I don't, uh, you know?
A, a portion of the property does drain to the pond that he referenced to that, that we were required to put the stubout to it. And, and we're willing to eliminate every of the, all the stubouts. I mean, that, we're, we're absolutely agreeable to that. Um there are things you can do to minimize uh any trespassing that would go on at the end of stubouts with that we're, we're required to put a barricade at the end of them. Uh so um, you know, property fences and that sort of thing would, would be close to that barricade, which would prevent people um from uh trespassing onto the golf course. But the, our boundary is way in the rough. I mean, way in the rough. It's not near the fairway.
Okay.
Um but it is visible, you know, from the golf course. When you tee off uh on that eighth hole, seventh or eighth hole, I think you'll, you'll be able to see these for sure. Um i- i- if I'm, if I may, there's one thing I forgot to mention in my opening remarks, and I think I had enough time to, can you give me some latitude here?
I would, I would like that.
Just a couple. Um the, the condition of approval regarding the sewer. Um it, while, while we don't disagree with engineering's concern about how we'll get to sewer, and it's really only that northern leg of the property uh that we can't uh get to gravity sewer. We feel like that, we, we've not had the opportunity to have those discussions with engineering or Public Works uh Water and Sewer Department. And so what we would like to do is uh remove that from the condition of approval, and the reason I'm asking for that is if for whatever reason, and, and we don't feel like the easement will be judged against us, um if for whatever reason that may happen, in the event that happened, your decision today would prevent us from meeting the conditions of approval, which means we would have to bring this back to you again. And obviously, we don't wanna do that. We, we, we know we can't plant lots that don't have sewer, and so we just appreciate the latitude to work through this with Chris Brown and his guys in engineering to find a solution that they're okay with in the event uh that a judge should, uh should uh judge against us. But we're not asking you to make a decision on that. The legal action that Robert initiated, we're just asking you, hey, do we meet all the tenants that Blake uh, you know, described earlier uh for subdivision? We feel like we do.
Mr. Henley, one last question there.
Yes, sir.
Um uh, one thing that we've done in the past, uh when uh, when, when there was a, a, a high likelihood that a stubout would never be used, is to uh plant it uh as a, as a, uh, just on paper, as an, as an easement on paper. How would your development feel about uh having, having um some stubout connections uh on paper only?
We'd be happy to do that, but I, I feel confident that the city would not be in favor of it. Uh I did a subdivision years back called Candlewood, right off of two sixty-five. And there were two of those that we did exactly what you described, and uh the people that bought the lots adjacent to it, uh they, I guess people are not in the habit of getting their property surveyed when they buy it now. And they didn't get it surveyed. They built retaining walls and, you know, ornate fences and that sort of thing. Uh and ultimately, the city vacated that right-of-way, which eliminated a connection which would have been beneficial to that little development to the north. There is still one to the south, um but we're happy to do that. I just, I don't know that we could garner approval for it.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Henley.
Uh-huh.
So a question for staff. Uh uh it sounds like that has been done before and, and been partially successful. Uh do you have any comments on that concept?
Um it has been done before. I know where staff has recommended in favor of it. There was uh like a steep topol- topographical concern. So like uh the right-of-way was plotted at the time, but uh given the grade of the location, we didn't recommend that the applicant build the street at that time. But there was a speci- a site-specific topographic reason for it. Um I think to Mr. Henley's point, it's probably not something in this instance that we would immediately support. Um but it's not something that we've, we've fully vetted right now either, so.
That you haven't fully, you haven't fully vetted that, that concept?
Uh not at this location, no.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Uh I think personally, I have a hard time supporting that as this, this body has fought to get those added over the to Mr. Henley's point, six or seven times we've seen this. Um and we've also seen within the city, although they've invested in their golf course, I we've seen golf courses turn over and turn into city parks and massive new developments, as we saw with Underwood Property. So that, that one's a hard one uh for me. I, I, I'd rather them be there. Um I, I, I will say, um, you know, I'm supportive of all the variances. Don't fully understand what Mr. Henley was requiring that we strike. Uh condition number three, uh, uh, we're not the experts in that. I'd rather hear from Mr. Baccaccio on that before I make any other comments. So, Mr. Baccaccio, yeah, if you, if you could help us understand.
Yeah, of course. Uh so typically, uh a preliminary plot of development is required to uh provide sewer to their, uh their infrastructure uh or their development. I think the comment that we made as far as uh that off-site extension, lift station, gravity sewer, uh is really in an effort to protect the city um in the event that that easement uh is found to, to not be correct, to not exist. Uh if, if that condition isn't on, on the plat- isn't on the, on the plan, um i- it really serves as a, a second layer of protection. So it merely states that, you know, grading permit may not be issued uh until, you know, we know for sure that that easement exists and um that gravity sewer is available. I've talked with our utilities engineer, talked with Public Works Director as far as options to provide sewer to this property. One would be uh another lift station. The other would be a, a low-pressure system, both which um are not acceptable to our utility. Uh the low-pressure system uh is, is not even on the books. And then uh in order to provide a lift station that costs to extend gravity uh has to exceed the twenty-year life cycle of, of a lift station uh that uh, that would be installed instead of gravity. And so uh we feel pretty clear that uh that that condition uh should be included. Uh and in the event that something does happen in that northern portion that Mr. Henley recommended or, or recognized, uh can't drain via that gravity sewer extension, uh we can, uh we can address that uh at that time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Baccaccio. I, I think I'm gonna be in favor of everything that's recommended by staff. Appreciate all the traffic calming that was added in past renditions and how the crossing, on-street parking, things like that, I think have really eliminated the, the original. I think the original time we saw it, or maybe with both phases, it's up to like twenty-two-hundred feet block length. So seeing those breakouts is good for me, and I'll be voting in favor of, of it as staff's laid out. Any other comments?
I, Commissioner Garlock. I'm in line with you. I, I think that staff has made the right decision in the um s- street seven and block length, and then also the back of the right-of-way of the, the sidewalks, and I'd be voting in line with, with the um is in the packet also. Thank you.
Commissioner Brink?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve PPL twenty-two zero-six, um recommending partially in favor of requested variance to block length minimum, in favor of recommended right-of-way dedication, in favor of recommended treaty improvements, and all other conditions that out, as outlined by staff.
Commissioner Brink, you have a second.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Winston.
I just wanted to, to say why I'm, I'm voting against the motion, and, and that is because um because um these, these stubouts onto the golf course, I believe, are a uh public nuisance that they're, they're going to encourage uh people to drive out on the golf course and, and uh um it's, it's just simply going to always be a problem for the golf course. And, and I think uh that this is a situation where having, having a um, a paper stubouts is, is an appropriate move uh to keep everybody safe and to be good neighbors.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Winston. Any other comments before we go to vote? Seeing none, Ms. Masters, will you please call the vote?
Johnson?
Yes.
Garlock?
Yes.
Madden?
Yes.
Holcomb? Oh, uh Brink?
Yes.
Winston?
No.
Canada?
Yes.
Motion to approve carries.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Masters. Our next item of new business is CUP twenty-two zero nineteen. It's a conditional use permit summoned by Stay NWA for property located at four-six-five South Locust Avenue. Appor- or apartment number six. The property is zoned MSC Main Street Center and contains approximately point-one-three acres. The request is to use uh is to use residence as short-term rental, and Ms. Masters has our staff report.
Sorry, one moment, please. I seem to be having uh, one second. Apologies for that. Uh all right. So yeah, the subject, uh property and this uh proposal, this is. So, yeah, the subject uh, property in this uh proposal, this is going to be uh the first conditional use permit for a short-term rental that the commission has heard since the uh short-term rental ordinance uh was adopted by the city council on April twentieth, twenty-twenty-one. Um, so uh, with this uh particular request, uh, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit approval to use the property as a type-two short-term rental, uh, which are those not occupied by a permanent resident. Uh, type-two short-term rentals uh are subject generally to density limitations, including a two percent citywide cap and restrictions on the number of units that may be used as a short-term rental in multifamily dwelling complexes. There are some exceptions to uh those rules, which we will get into in a moment. Again, as uh a reminder to the commission, um, uh, there are two, since this is the first uh one of these that we are hearing, since the ordinance was originally approved, uh, there are essentially two types of short-term rentals. Uh, the first is a type-one, and those uh short-term rental uh licenses uh apply to uh those whose uh resident is actually a permanent resident and a permanent property owner, uh, that being defined by somebody who lives in that property for at least nine months out of the year. Uh, type-two short-term rentals are those that um are not occupied by a full-time resident, um, but instead are going to be used full-time as a short-term rental um uh use. Uh, so that's what the applicant is requesting in this instance. And that, and type-one uh short-term rentals are never subject to conditional use permits, but type-twos per ordinance uh are always subject to conditional use permit approval. Uh, so this particular request uh at hand, um, the applicant is requesting uh to use the property, um, it is a six-unit multifamily structure. Uh, the applicant is requesting to use one of those units as a short-term rental. Uh, the property is zoned uh as MSC, that's Main Street Center. Uh, a couple of additional nuances to uh, to bring to the commission's attention. So um, I, I did mention previously that type-two uh short-term rentals are subject to some specific density requirements. So uh, there is a requirement that um short-term, that type-two short-term rentals can never, we can never have so many that exceed two percent of the city's uh number of overall dwelling units as established by the American Community Survey. Um, so uh, that two percent cap, however, is uh, does not apply to any short-term rental that's located within a zoning district that allows hotel or motel uses by right. So in this particular instance, the property is zoned Main Street Center, which does allow hotel and motel uses by right. So therefore, the citywide density cap does not apply in this instance. Uh, full, uh, secondly, there's a secondary density cap associated with short-term rental uses, uh, and that is uh when it is in a multifamily complex, uh, the short, number of short-term rentals is typically limited to ten percent of the overall number of units in that complex. Uh, one exception to that rule is that if that complex happens to be within a horizontal property regime, uh, that building density cap does not apply. So in this particular instance, with this particular short-term rental, uh, they are located in a zoning district that, where the citywide density cap does not apply, uh, and they're also located within a horizontal property regime, so the building density cap does not apply. So in this particular uh instance, this entire building could theoretically, every single unit could be leased out as a, or licensed as a short-term rental unit. Uh, with this particular request, uh occupancy in this location per the short-term rental ordinance uh is typically limited, limited to two guests per bedroom plus two. Uh, this is a two-bedroom uh unit, so the occupancy for every overnight stay would be lo- limited to six guests. Uh, the site does have two off-street parking spaces. There's also a dumpster on-site that the applicant intends for residents or those uh short-term tenants to use. Um, we have not received any public comment on this request, um, and with that, I can answer any additional questions that you might have.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Masters. We'll call on you if we have anything. Next, we'll open it up to the applicant, is the applicant here and uh able to speak to this item? Ms. Masters, are you aware if the applicant's present or not?
Uh, they do not appear to be present.
Okay. Oh, looks like we have a hand raised from Taylor Rayburn. Taylor, if you would, please uh unmute your microphone, state your name and anything else you'd like us to know.
Hey there, uh, this is Taylor Rayburn. I am uh the owner of uh Stay NWA, which is a property management company for vacation rentals in Fayetteville. Uh, we're listed as the applicant, um, but Dana Parton is actually the owner of the property, and she is present there. Uh, so I'm here to answer any questions you guys may have. Dana's also there to answer any questions that uh, that you may have.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Dana, did you have anything else you wanted to add? Okay. All right, we'll call on uh both of you if we have any questions. Next, we'll open up to the public. If uh any mo- members of the public would like to speak to this item, we just ask that you either raise your virtual hand or step up to the podium. Seeing none, I'll turn it over to the commission, commissioners. Commissioner Garlock.
Thank you, um, I appreciate uh staff's comments. Um, there's no uh public comment on this. And with that, I'd move to approve uh CUP twenty-two-zero-nineteen with conditions as determined with compatibility with adjacent properties in favor of other conditions as recommended by staff, since this does uh meet all the um city council's requirements. Thank you.
Commissioner Candace, a second. All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Garlock to approve CUP twenty-two-zero-nineteen with a second from Commissioner Canada. I see uh Commissioner Madden's hands up, so we'll go to her next.
Um, I just have a quick question, uh, and I apologize, I should have gone and taken a look at this, but um, I, I guess I wasn't focusing on the six number. Um, in this area along Fifth, um, I know not on South School, is there any on-street parking available in the area?
I can answer that. There are some on-street parking spaces along uh Fifth Street. Uh, the applicant um did indicate that the unit itself does have access to two spaces within the parking lot.
Right. I, I understood that. It was just when you just put up the details, I didn't notice it the other day that it, I'm just, I'm just thinking forward, if we have six recent grad who are here for a football game and all six of them have cars, um, what those implement- implications would be on any given weekend? So I, I understand, but that's why I was asking if there's also on-street parking in the, in the neighborhood? So if there is at least some on Fifth and maybe on Locust, um, just, I was just trying to understand the scenario.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Madden. I, I have a quick question for staff. Ms. Masters, uh, how long does a CUP last? Is it just stay with um the owner? Does it stay with uh Stay NWA? What happens if, if uh, you know, this individual sells the property? Is, is it still a short-term rental?
Um, so typically, the conditional use permit would, uh, so conditional use permit approval is good for one year typically. So the applicant has one year to obtain their business license. Uh, if they do not obtain their business license, then they'd have to come back to the commission and ask for another conditional use permit. Uh, if they do obtain their business license, then the conditional use permit, basically, um, they, they have that indefinitely. Uh, there is uh some, uh, there are, there are some requirements as far as uh when the business license renewal period comes, there are some uh basically re-checks at that time. They do have to uh resubmit uh insurance information, they have to resubmit, um, you know, to make sure that that's up to date. They'll have to resubmit uh basically an affidavit uh from the Building Safety Division saying that the building is still safe uh for this type of use. Um, so there are, there are some additional uh renewal requirements that are, that are automatically in place with any short-term uh rental license. Uh, as far as transferability, uh, I, I have to admit, I don't immediately know the answer to that question. Oftentimes, we will add a uh condition of approval that it does not transfer uh to a, an, another owner. I think in this instance, that's also the case. Uh, I'm gonna have to just read the code really quick to remember that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Masters. I mean, it sounds like it stays with the business license holder, so.
I, I believe that is the case, uh, if you give me a minute just to double check.
Okay. Uh, while you're checking, I'll go to Commissioner Brink.
Yeah, thank you. I, that brought up a question to me, and maybe this is a sophomore question. Um, who obtains the license to operate the Airbnb? Is that the owner of the property? Or is that the um management company that's really operating the Airbnb?
Uh, it is typically the owner of the property. They at least have to give consent uh to obtain that business license. Uh, the property management company may uh, may run it for them, but the owner has to provide the insurance information and, and, and all of that.
Very good. Would you have a motion to approve on um the table from Commissioner Garlock and a second from Commissioner Canada, barring Ms. Masters' comments? Uh, I think we're ready to go to the vote, so. I don't, at least I don't see any other comments, so.
Mr. Chair, I, this is probably going to take me a little bit more reading, but I think the uh intention is that there is a re- but the best answer I can give is that there is a renewal process in place. Uh, so I believe that when the property transfers owners, uh, ah, here we go, any change in ownership, I found it, as I was talking, any change in ownership requires a new or amended business license. Um, that's uh the portion of code that refers to that. So I think that they would potentially need to come back and get another conditional use permit at the time of ownership change.
That sounds good to me. All right. Seeing no additional comments, would you please call the vote?
Johnson?
Yes.
Garlock?
Yes.
Madden?
Yes.
Uh, Brink?
Yes.
McGetrick?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Motion to approve carries.
Thank you, Ms. Masters. Our next item of new business is CUP twenty-two-zero-zero-two. It's a conditional use permit submitted by Aussie Capital LLC for property located at two-two-nine South Greg Avenue. Property is zoned RMF twenty-four residential multifamily, twenty-four units per acre, and contains approximately point-five-six acres. The request is to use residence as a short-term rental, and Ms. Masters has this one as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so the subject property in this uh particular instance um is located more in central Fayetteville. Uh, it is just west of the Frisco Trail and Fay Jones Woods at two-twenty-nine uh South Greg Avenue. Pull that up on full screen here for you. Uh, it does total approximately point-five-six acres. It is currently developed with several residential structures that county records indicate were built in the mid nineteen-nineties. Uh, again, on April twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, city council did adopt an ordinance to regulate short-term rentals operating within its limits. Uh, this is a type-two short-term rental request, which is why it's before you today. If it were a type-one, a conditional use permit uh approval would not be required. Uh, again, type-two short-term rentals are subject to density limitations, including a two percent citywide cap and restrictions on the number of units that may be used as a short-term rental in multifamily dwelling complexes. Uh, so here's some pictures of the elevations of the existing structure. Um, the applicant, uh, in this particular instance, um, the property is zoned uh RMF twenty-four. Um, so uh hotel and motel uses are not allowed by right, so this conditional use permit and subsequent business license will contribute to that overall, overall citywide density cap, uh, which at this time, uh, we are essentially nowhere close to hitting uh at this time. Uh, the property is located within a horizontal property regime, so the building density cap does not apply. So again, as a reminder, a- any one of the units in this uh apartment complex could become a short-term rental with uh that consideration. Um, in this uh instance, the occupancy will be limited to four guests. It is a one-bedroom uh short-term rental, so again, with occupancy requirens, requirements being two guests uh per bedroom plus two. Uh, the applicant has indicated two off-street parking spaces uh available for this unit as well. One is assigned, and one is an overflow guest parking space. There's also a dumpster on-site at this location. Uh, we have not received any public comment on the item, um, and I can answer any questions you might have about this. Uh, we are recommending approval today of CUP twenty-two-zero-zero-two with conditions as recommended by staff, and I can answer any additional questions you might have.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Masters. Next, we'll hear from the applicant, is the applicant here and present, speak to this item? Or owner? All right. Seeing nobody else, open up to the public or any members of the public here to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to the commission, commissioners. Commissioner Brink?
Get you to it. Mr. Chair, I move to approve conditional use permit twenty-two-zero-zero-two with conditions determining in favor of compatibility with adjacent properties and in favor of all other conditions as recommended by staff. Uh, I would also ask, um, within the staff report, within the presentation, we've heard the two percent cap, um, I would appreciate, and I guess in addition to the staff report of, I guess, where we stand with that. I understand at this point, we're very low as we should be, but if we could just add that in the future, I think that would be uh beneficial for us, but my motion still stands.
I'll second the motion. So we have a, so we have a motion to approve CUP twenty-two-zero-zero-two from Commissioner Brink with a second from Commissioner Winston. Do we have any other additional comments before we go to the vote? Seeing none, Ms. Masters, will you please call the vote?
Johnson?
Yes.
Garlock?
Yes.
Madden?
Yes.
Brink?
Yes.
McGetrick?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Motion to approve carries.
Thank you, Ms. Masters. Our next item of new business is RZN twenty-two-zero-zero-eight. It's a rezoning submitted by JS Fenwick Properties for property located at fourteen-sixty-six North Greg Avenue. Property is zoned RSF-four residential, single-family, four units per acre, and contains approximately point-four-three acres. The request is to rezone the property to RI-twelve residential intermediate, twelve units per acre, and Mr. Umberger has our staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the subject property is located a hundred-and-fifty feet northeast of the intersection of Greg and Lawson Street. Uh, t- two lots on the east side of North Greg Avenue total approximately zero-point-four-three acres and make up this site. Properties are zoned RSF-four residential, single-family, four units per acre, and they're currently undeveloped um and, and covered by tree canopy. Uh, this property slopes from the east down towards North Greg, uh, at its, uh, on its west at a, a consistent approximately fifteen percent grade. And accordingly, the, the, a quarter acre, roughly a quarter acre of the eastern extents of the property lies within the hillside hilltop overlay district. In terms of the surrounding uses, um, there's, there's sort of a mix of um largely single and two-family residences, um, as well as some undeveloped land immediately to the east. The subject request is to rezone the property from RSF-four to RI-twelve residential intermediate, twelve units per acre. This property does fall within uh sort of split between residential and city neighborhood areas. The city neighborhood area portion of the property is closest to Greg Avenue, and the, and as you get further uh east into the property, it, it transitions into a, a residential neighborhood area. Um, both of those call out for a variety in, in housing types and, and a, uh, mix of uses in a, in a way that's appropriate uh and of, of scale um with, with the city neighborhood uh area, uh typically uh encouraging more, more dense development. The subject property also um does not have any uh protected streams, uh floodplain or hydro soils in the area, um, although there is, there is that presence of the hillside hilltop overlay district. Um, in terms of the uh compatibility of the request, we do find it to be compatible with the surrounding mix of uses. Um, the, this area has a, a broad range of uh residential densities and lot configurations. Uh, and rezoning to RI-twelve is gonna uh expand the variety in housing types that's permitted at this location. Um, we find that the increase in density is incremental and justified, uh, given this property's proximity to non-residential services and employment centers, as well as its location along a, a prominent thoroughfare. Um, we also find that the Balkan area regulations are suitable and, and not out of context with the surrounding properties. Um, single-family developments are permitted uh at, at its smallest lot size, a, a fifty-foot um minimum lot width and five thousand square feet. And, and as you start to increase the development, so that would be for a single-family home, as you have like two and three-family uh dwellings, the lot sizes that are, the minimum lot sizes that are required are wider and, and larger. Um, given the slope to the east, we find that the, the uh three-story hu- um structures would not be out of scale with the surrounding context, and nor do they differ from what's allowed with RSF four zoning. Um, also, RI twelve zoning is going to uh include a build-to zone, which promotes walkability and, and move those structures up towards Greg Street. Um, in terms of uh the land use plan, we do find that the request is consistent with uh goals identified in City Plan twenty forty. Uh, goals number one is to uh encourage appropriate infill. Uh, four is to grow a livable transportation network, and six is to create opportunities for attainable housing. Uh, this site scores moderate to high on the infill scoring matrix, uh indicating some additional residential uh density is, is appropriate. And, and it would locate um density with access to basic development needs like sewer, water. Um, and a, and a diverse transportation network. Um, it's also proximate to the Veterans Hospital to the east and the University of Arkansas. Uh, main campus less than a mile to the south. We do believe there's sufficient justification for rezoning the property to RI twelve, including diversifying the mix of uh residential uses along a, a neighborhood link street. Um, that we find is, is gonna be able to adequately handle um the increased traffic at this location. Uh, the rezoning would increase traffic, but uh staff finds that it's not to a level that's gonna be undesirable or, or uh incongruent with um what, what North Greg Avenue is, is able to handle. Um, so accordingly, staff did not identify any issues with this request. We have not received any public comment on it. Um, we are recommending that the rezoning is, is forwarded to City Council with a recommendation of approval. And I can stand for any questions if you have them.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Umberger. Next, we'll hear from the applicant. Is applicant here to speak to this item? If you would please state your name and anything else you'd like us to know?
Hello, and I, I thank you for your time. Uh, my name is Matthew Scott with JS Fenwick Properties, uh nineteen oh-one Boston Street in Fort Smith. I really don't have any other further comments. Um, I'm more than welcome to any questions that you guys have, but um I believe Ryan covered the topic pretty well, so thank you, guys.
Alright, thank you. We'll call on you if we have any additional questions. Uh, next, we'll hear from uh the public or any members of the public like to speak to this item. Seeing none, I'll turn over the commission commissioners.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Winston?
Um, seems like an appropriate rezoning, so I'll move to forward rezone twenty twenty-two zeros twenty-eight to City Council with a recommendation of approval.
Commissioner Brink, second. Alright, so I have a motion from Commissioner Winston and a second from Commissioner Brink to forward to City Council with a recommendation of approval. And we'll go to Commissioner Madden, who has her hand up.
Yes, I can't just yell out here where I'm off, off the screen. Um, I, I support this rezoning. I mentioned or I had questions about this uh at the agenda meeting last week, and uh I think this is just for all of us moving forward. I, I, I wish that we had a more clear, distinct idea of why we have RIU and RI twelve. Which are all right here along Greg, and ultimately, a bunch more things may rezone. Uh, it seems like we should either merge them together or come up with a clear answer of what's the difference between the two. Because in this scenario, it seems like all of this should be uh have the same zoning, but I will support this rezoning.
Thank you, Commissioner Madden. I, I agree, and, and I don't even know what the difference is, other than probably form-based zone setback requirements.
They, I can start describing it. I, I know Mr. Umberger can as well. Um, they, there are some differences in terms of density. Firstly, it's probably the biggest identifying factor. RIU does not have a density maximum, but RI twelve has a limitation of twelve units per acre. Uh, the use schedules are similar. Um, there's also a pretty significant change in the lot area requirements between the two. Um, RIU has a minimum lot width of eighteen feet, um and RI twelve, I think, is fifty. But uh, but yeah, so there, there are some distinctions between the two. Again, I think the, the biggest biggest considerations would be the density requirements and the generally the lot area requirements between the two.
But clearly, we rezoned properties right here the same, and, and this shouldn't hold up this application tonight. It just seems like we should have clear intent of what we're desiring and what the City Plan twenty forty says. Rather than us doing a patchwork of different things that are similar yet different. It seems like one of them should clearly be preferred for the public benefit.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner Madden.
And I know that uh the, the staff did not write these districts. It's just, um, you know, we have a lot of weird things we have to live with.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Madden. Um, with that, seeing no additional comments, Ms. Masters, will you please call the vote?
Johnson?
Yes.
Garlock?
Yes.
Madden?
Yes.
Brink?
Yes.
McGetrick?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Motion to forward carries.
Thank you, Ms. Masters. Our last item of new business is RZN twenty twenty-two zeros twenty-nine. It's a rezoning submitted by Watkins, Boyer, Gray, and Curry PLLC for property located at sixteen seventy-eight West Palmer Place. The property is owned RSF four residential, single-family, four units per acre, contains approximately point three-five acres. The request is to rezone the property to RIU residential intermediate urban, and Mr. Umberger has this one as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, this property is in South Fayetteville, situated to, uh between the University of Arkansas campus to the east and the south slope of uh Markham Hill to the west. It's roughly a quarter mile southwest of the intersection of Center Street and South Razorback Road. This property is owned RSF four residential, single-family, four units per acre, and it contains approximately zero-point-three-five acres. Uh, an approximately thirteen hundred square foot single-family dwelling uh that was built in nineteen seventy-six. According to Washington County records occupies the property. Um, this site slopes from a high point near the northwest corner down towards the southeast corner at a consistent approximately fourteen percent uh grade. In terms of the surrounding land use, um it is uh largely um RSF four residential, single-family four unit per acre zoned properties um that are uh developed with, with single-family residences in the immediate uh vicinity around it. Um, but as you can see, uh down to the bottom-left corner on the slide there, uh as you start to get further away, especially towards the south, um there's sort of a, a mix of um a multifamily development immediately south, um and then, and then some townhomes uh further afield. The subject request is to rezone the property from RSF four to RIU residential intermediate urban. Oh, it would help if I'm in presentation mode. There we go. Um, the City Plan twenty forty, uh future land use plan designates us as a residential neighborhood area. Uh, as mentioned previously, uh these areas are intended to support a wide variety of housing uh types and densities of an appropriate scale. There is a small portion of this, this site that falls within the hillside hilltop overlay district. Um, it's, it's extremely small, but didn't register uh enough to, to um get the acreage on it. But it, it was a very minor portion of the site. Um, otherwise, there's no protected streams. Uh, the property does not lie within the floodplain, and there's uh, uh no hydro soils present on the site. Um, it does have an infill score of seven and a weighted score of eight. Um, and, and so in terms of land use, uh staff finds the request to be mostly compatible with the surrounding mix of uses. Uh, the surrounding area includes a mix of residential dwelling types and a variety of lot configurations. Rezoning to RIU expands the variety of permitted housing types, ranging from single up to four-family dwellings by right. Um, cluster housing developments are allowed by right in RIU zoning, uh where there are conditional use in RSF four. Uh, immediately surrounding properties are developed with single-family uh townhouses and multifamily dwellings. Staff finds an increase in density to be appropriate at this location, uh though we do recognize the unlimited density maximum associated with RIU zoning could present issues. Um, this property is situated near the University of Arkansas campus. It's proximate to the Markham Hill, uh walking trails. Uh, restaurants and retail along MLK, uh which is less than a half mile to the south. Um, and rezoning is again gonna require those structures to be built up near the streets uh and, and have our form-based uh zoning requirements. Um, on the other hand, uh we do have some concerns about the Balkan area regulations and the RIU zoning. Uh, it does represent a considerable increase in the development potential of the site. Um, the requested zoning district may be out of character with the lot and block configuration on the surrounding properties. Especially uh with due proximity uh to an established neighborhood and uh to the north. Um, to the south and east, lot, many lots range from uh thirty or forty uh feet wide and are roughly point one to point one-five acres in size, um and developed with, with townhomes. However, uh immediately to the, or in the neighborhood to the north, um there's uh many single-family uh lots, and those generally have one-hundred-foot lot widths and are about a third of an acre in size. Um, so nearly, nearly triple of, of the size of the lots uh to the south. Um, dwellings in RIU require a minimum lot width of eighteen feet, and there is no minimum lot area. Uh, the subject property is a corner lot and has nearly two-hundred-fifty feet of street frontage. Um, so uh staff, staff does have some concerns about um the subdivision potential that would be allowed in RIU zoning. Um, the development on the property would be limited uh in, in providing uh adequate uh off-street parking. Um, tree preservation, I should, I should actually backtrack that, just adequate parking in general, as long as they're meeting uh the requirements for uh, uh, single through fee- three-family dwellings are required to provide two spaces per dwelling. And, and anything above that would require uh one space per bedroom. The, the development on the property would be uh limited also by tree preservation requirements and stormwater drainage. Um, so on the balance of consideration, we are uh supportive, and we do find it to be um compatible with the surrounding mix of uses. Um, in terms of the land use plan, uh staff finds the proposal is consistent with the goals in City Plan twenty forty and the future land use designation for the area. Um, so similar to the last request, we find that it is it aligns with goals one, uh opportunity, to create opportunities for appropriate infill. Four, to grow a livable transportation network, and six, to create opportunities for attainable housing. Um, this site has a moderate infill score of seven, indicating that RSF four zoning may not may no longer represent the, the property's highest and best use, given its proximity to all those non-residential services previously mentioned. Um, this, this property also has uh easy access or, or ready access to basic development necessities such as water, sewer, and fire access. The other non-residential uses nearby support the site being char- characterized as infill. Especially with the University of Arkansas main campus uh within walking distance to the east. Um, and allowing a range of, of single to four-family dwellings also could uh contribute towards more affordable housing options beyond what's typically allowed with, with uh strictly single-family zoning. Um, we do believe that there's sufficient justification for rezoning this property, um due to the consistency with the future land use map and City Plan twenty forty's goals. We uh find that the location is, is justified and suitable to handle the additional density. Uh, we do acknowledge that the, the rezoning carries an associated potential to increase traffic at this location. Uh, though, uh given the, the lot size and, and proximity to um trails and non-residential services, we find that um it would not rise to a level that's, that's necessarily undesirable, um especially since uh residents could use alternative modes. So, uh on the balance of considerations, we, we are recommending um that this rezoning request is forwarded to City Council with a recommendation of approval. Uh, we did receive one uh inquiry on, on the uh proposal, um but no comments in support or opposition of the request. And I can stand for any questions that you have.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Umberger. We'll call on you if we have any additional questions. Next, we'll hear from the applicant. Is applicant here in present to speak to this item? If you would please state your name and anything else you'd like us to know. Thank you.
Uh, Will Kelstrom here on behalf of the applicant, Jeff Rich. So, this is a point three-five acre lot on West Palmer Place. We're wanting to rezone it from RSF four to RIU. The reason why we're coming with this rezone is that we would like to put two sets of two attached townhomes on that piece of property. Four units total, so two duplexes or two, two, two sets of two attached townhomes, whatever you'd like to call it. A good example of some of the developments that this developer has done before is on the corner of School and South just to the south of the new network building. Those are some of the townhomes that he's built, um and these are gonna be very similar to that. So, um, there's RSF four to the north, the west, and the east, but there is RF, RMF twenty-four to the south, and there's a bunch of it. There's a bunch of duplexes, and there's even an apartment building. So, reading from the definition of residential intermediate urban is designed to permit and encourage the development of detached and attached dwellings in suitable environments to provide a range of housing types compatible in scale with single-family homes, and to encourage a diversity of housing types to meet demand for walkable urban living. The fact that this code exists in general, it's the, the whole purpose of it is to provide housing types that are compatible with single-family housing is, I think speaks to the fact that that can always be done. You can always, in an urban environment, you can make attached dwellings compatible with single-family ones. So, I've, I've told y'all what we're gonna build, um, but what you guys are gonna consider is what's, what's the worst thing we can build? And I, and I, and I have a sneaking suspicion that the public is gonna get up and talk about that, so I'm, I'd like to run through that. RIU permits single-family dwellings and two through four attached dwellings. It does not permit multifamily by right, and the important, the reason that's important to mention is that when you attach more than four units, uh when you have more than four units attached, that is technically multifamily under Fayetteville's code. As I learned with the project I was uh up in front of y'all with a couple of weeks ago. So, it only lo- it only allows up to four attached. The minimum lot width is eighteen feet. With a hundred fifty feet of frontage, your maximum possible is eight units. But when you go and you take into account the setbacks and you put in three side setbacks, that's fifteen feet, that's gonna take out one of your units right there. So then, you're chop, you're cut down to four, four attached units and three attached units. Um, when you start putting in parking spaces, like Ryan just said, dedicate right-of-way, tree preservation, drainage, all of that. Your number of units continues to shrink, so, um, and this isn't even including market factors like houses need to have yards, and they need to have front yards, and people aren't gonna buy an eighteen-foot-wide house that's eighty-two feet deep. It's just, it, it's, that's not realistic. So, uh, the point of this exercise is to say that, that the worst-case scenario, even though the density limitation is none under RIU, the worst-case scenario is not unlimited density. It's, it's a few attached townhomes is what it is. Um, earlier, it got brought up, what, what is the difference between RIU and RI twelve? And I think this project is a good example, or this request is a good example of what the difference is. Um, RIU gives you a little bit more flexibility on some of these lots where you may be tighter. Under RI twelve, this is a point three-five acre lot. If we had to dedicate more than point oh-three acres to sidewalks or right-of-way, um, we're under a third of an acre and we lose a unit. So, uh, I think that this is a good example of, of where our, RIU can be used to create appropriate density. Um, you know, we always talk about in, in the planning sphere, we Um, you know, we always talk about in, in the planning sphere, we always talk about missing middle housing. Um, this is, this is missing middle housing. This is what we're talking about. We would like to come in and put two duplexes, two nice duplexes in a neighborhood. Um, that are context-appropriate. It's a gentle increase in density. This is the kind of density the Fayetteville's looking for, so if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kelstrom. Now open it to the public. If any members of the public would like to speak to this item, we ask that you come to, uh. Yep, the podium. If you would say your name, anything else you'd like to add?
My name is, my name is Robert, Robert Rhodes with the law firm of Hall Estle. And I was the inquiry that, um, Ryan got earlier. Um, and, but since then, I've done, um, talked to my clients and I've done some homework. My clients are the, uh, the property owners of, of, uh, two property owners directly across the street. From, um, from this site, um, across Palmer Street. And the, the one home is a fairly new house, uh, that was, you know, that was a tear-down and rebuild. Everything on Palmer Street. Palmer Street's kind of the dividing line. It's kind of like the line where, okay, all of these, um, really, um, nice little, um. Single-family homes, and then if you go one street behind Palmer Street, well, that's Nettleton's, Nettleship or Nettleton, I forget which. Nettleship, yeah. Well, that, yeah, that's where things change, but they don't, Palmer Street is truly RSF four. And, you know, if you think about, uh. I think in talking to Ryan earlier, he was telling me that RIU on, on this size lot, theoretically, you could have thirteen lots. Now, we all know that's theory, and there's no way to know how this could support that. But I'd say, um, if, if you are those owners of all these single-family homes right there on Palmer Street. Four is too many. You know, four is too many. Um, but, um, as I think you heard earlier, it could be more. I mean, it's gonna be limited by sidewalks and drainage and stuff like that, but still, um, we would ask you to, you know, to. Deny this rezoning. RIU also, um, uh, I think it is a fifteen percent tree canopy. Where RSF four is twenty-five percent. Uh, Palmer, if you, if you've driven down Palmer Street, it's a twenty-foot-wide street with, uh, no sidewalks, no curves. Deep ditches. You know. Ryan indicated that, um, you know, that, um, the, uh, the density sort of gave him some kind of pause and concern. Well, it definitely gives us concern. When you, when you look at just some specific quotes from the staff's report. You know, they use the word mostly compatible with surrounding mix. That's not a ringing endorsement, mostly compatible. Uh, I quote again, "Staff finds an increase in density to be appropriate at this location, though recognizes. The unlimited density maximum associated by RIU zoning may present issues." Yes, it presents issues to the people that live across the street and elsewhere on Palmer Street. Staff finds the requested, uh. Character with the block, so on, so forth. Anyways, um, this is anything but. A ringing endorsement of this rezoning, and I would ask that you deny it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Uh, we'll now, seeing additional public comment, we'll turn it over to, uh, the Commissioner, Commissioners.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Canada.
Um, I mean, looking at the property, uh, they are pretty confined to how many units that they can have. I know that we always look at worst-case scenario, but personally for me, I don't see the worst-case scenarios. And something that would adversely impact the neighborhood being present, along with that, with the weighted infill score is pretty high. And, um. I'm, I'm in favor, so I moved forward RZN twenty twenty-two zeros twenty-eight to the City Council with a recommendation of approval.
Give a second. Commissioner Brink will second, okay? All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Canada and a second from Commissioner Brink. Commissioner Madden.
Um, I am really struggling with this, uh, I, I know that also that, uh. Ryan's comments, uh, Mr. Umberger's comments, there, there was, there were some pros and cons, and I'm thinking. Urban design-wise, neighborhood-wise, um, you know, is our goal that everything on Palmer Place and Palmer Ave. Should be developed. I mean, the, the ideal is that you have like facing like. So as you go up the hill, is the expectation that the whole hillside we're trying to intensify? Um, that, that seems unclear to me. Every, everything up on the hill really does seem, single-family. And we can't do conditional rezonings, so yes, there are limitations. Uh, how many, it's unlimited density, but eighteen-foot-wide, I mean, over, under duplex. There, there seems to be a lot of variables right now, but when you just quickly say, yeah, let's rezone. We know the rezoning doesn't commit anybody to any development pro forma. Uh, they get the rezoning and it can move forward. So I'm, I'm really kind of struggling because the idea of some nicely-designed townhouses that might be. Owner-occupied and not just be more student rentals, well, then maybe they would help us get, you know, more. Housing affordability mixed in, but if they just become duplexes that have, you know, the maximum number of unrelated people. Living in them who all have a car, um, you know, are, are we creating, uh, a nuisance? That fits within the letter of the law, but not the intent. So I'm, I'm kind of struggling, and so I would be interested in what other commissioners are thinking about this.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Canada.
Um, one thing, I guess when I look at it, city goals and kind of what we're going forwards, uh, going towards is. I can see the comment of like versus like, but I, I mean, the way I interpret it is that we're looking for a diversity of housing types. And that's personally why I would be in favor of this, along with, um. It, I, I just don't believe it'd be too dense, uh, for what, for this land use and what can actually be put here. Oh my, I don't know why I keep pressing this button. Um, but, um, that's just kind of where I'm going from, but I'm open to what anyone else has to say.
Commissioner Brink.
Yeah, and I'll clarify why I'm, I'm comfortable with it. I, you know. We have heard the term missing middle, and when I think about trying to keep, you know, um. Folks in Fayetteville and, and, and knowing that there is a shortage of housing, I'm more inclined to try and, and get. More housing, and with the constraints, while I understand on its face, it sounds that the density is unlimited. I think in practice, it's, it's not. So, I, I tend to agree, while this is an intense rezoning, if approved. The, the functionality would be less intense than what some may perceive, and, and so that's why I'm, I'm in favor of it. I, I can see, um, you know, a couple of, you know, townhome duplexes, wherever you want to classify it as. But I can see that on this site, and I, I can still see it being compatible with its, um, with its neighborhood.
Thank you, Commissioner Brink. Commissioner Garlock.
Thank you, um, I, I had a couple concerns, like, how would the stormwater manual restrict? Some of the concerns with the stormwater management? Would that, like, severely restrict what would be built there? Is Mr. Pacchio still on?
Yeah, Mr. Pacchio is still here. Josh, if you could help us with that one.
Uh, yeah, so typically our, our standard answer for, for rezones with drainage is depending on the type of development that comes through. Uh, it'll either be under the GSP worksheet, which covers anything from twelve hundred to ten thousand. Uh, net new impervious area added to a site, and if it's over ten thousand. Uh, square feet of new impervious area, it's covered under the drainage manual. Uh, so depending on, on the type of impact, those, those two options would be, uh, what would be required.
So, with the restrictions of the stormwater manual, if they would build ten thousand square feet. How many units could they put on there? Would, with parking and, uh, other impervious surfaces?
That would be, uh, kind of up on the site constraints. I'm not, uh, familiar with the size of the site. Now, there are options as far as underground detention, uh, infiltration trenches, buyer retention, all that. Uh, takes up site, uh, site area, and so that's something that, uh, like I said, would be considered. During that development phase of the project.
Does the size of the initial home that's present there, that from the nineteen seventies, does, does that impact the? Buildout and the impervious surface? I thought they had some kind of connection with that.
Yeah, it impacts it in the sense that it would be, that's considered existing impervious area. So what we're looking at is the net addition or, uh, subtraction of impervious area. So that's a, you know, a, a massive house and they get rid of it and, and put a few smaller units, then you might have a decrease or. If it's a smaller house and, and the site becomes mostly impervious, you'll have an increase.
Okay, and then the staff had, uh, questions. What was their best alternative to RIU? It seemed like staff wasn't wholehearted about this. What would their, their option be? If I could ask Mr. Umberger or Mr. Masters?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I can just start with, so, um, RIU was the request that we had, um, put in front of us. So that was the request that we evaluated, um, with conversations with the applicant about our concerns ahead of the meeting. But, uh, but ultimately, they, they wanted to go with the request that's before you this evening, so that's what we chose to evaluate.
Thank you. I also have those concerns of, uh, Commissioner Madden, as you look at a RSF four in that neighborhood. And you want to change the face of it across, and I know that on Nettleship, I used to know that one. It was just a gutter. Uh, in the seventies and, uh, and feel how nice it's changed, close to the university and stuff. I just am, I'm struggling with when you're gonna start changing the face of the neighborhoods. Um, in pure RSF four neighborhoods, so, but thank you for your help.
Thank you, Commissioner Garlock. Commissioner Madden.
Um, so this is a, this is a follow-up because I'm, I've been thinking through and I've been thinking about the proposal that got. The rezoning request that got tabled at the beginning of this evening and going up to RSF eight, I think it was, and fifty-foot lots, et cetera. Um, and I know there was, there are a lot of different issues, but I'm sitting here thinking, this is on a hillside. If this was rezoned and this was two pairs of duplexes, so four units. Fronting onto Palmer, the hillside's falling away behind, that they did a drive-in on the backside, the lower side. Then they could also potentially do garages with ADUs on top. Is that correct? So could each unit of the duplex have two ADUs? That's a question for staff. And the ADUs have no parking requirements?
So, uh, just a, a couple of things there, and hopefully I'm gonna adequately, uh, answer your question, but please, um. Back me up if you need to, um, so, um, I think the first question was that if. Each duplex would be allowed to have an ADU. The property itself, or, so on, on any given property, you are allowed to have up to one detached. And one attached, uh, accessory dwelling unit. Um, so, so yes, they could potentially have two ADUs. Uh, there is a gross floor area limitation that limits the habitable space to twelve hundred square feet, and that would be whether or not. Uh, if, that would be if they have one detached, um, it would be limited to twelve hundred square feet, or if they had two, that would be. Uh, limited to six hundred square feet apiece. And then, um, I think your second question was about parking requirements for accessory dwellings. Uh, if an accessory dwelling unit is above eight hundred square feet in area, then they are required to provide one. Uh, parking space for that accessory dwelling unit.
But if they had two that were six hundred each, so they stayed at the twelve hundred, then they wouldn't have to have any.
I'm gonna have to double-check the ordinance to, to be certain on that.
Okay, I, 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 you know, I love to believe the applicants that they're gonna do exactly what they say, but I know how many times people come back in. With something that's different, and so I'm, I'm just trying to think through, we definitely need more missing middle housing. And there's a lot that's been built around me that, you know, and some of it's better designed than others. Um, I'm just kind of trying to think through, you know, would, would there be something else? That would also allow that increase in density and also allow the missing middle housing without perhaps the same potential of, uh. Some, something going up that then we come back and everybody throws their hands up in the air and their hair's on fire saying, oh, this is not what we expected. Because I'm a big proponent of all of these things that we say we like to do. I'm just looking at this site and this request for rezoning. And what potentially could be put if you took advantage of the hillside and actually, you know. Built garages, rear-loaded, and then had units on top of the garages. Um, could be a really nice design. It could be spectacular, but it could, uh, but it could go sideways on all of us.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, uh, ho- hold on one second, Mr. Kelstrom. Uh, yes, Mr. Umberger, just to address Commissioner Madden's, uh, que- second question there. So, um, the way the ordinance reads is for accessory dwelling units with individual or combined habitable space greater than eight hundred square feet. One parking space shall be provided on-site.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Kelstrom, I, i- if your comments around what you're intending to build versus what may be built, then, uh, okay. Yeah, go ahead. Come on up here.
The applicant is to, to remedy all these concerns. The applicant is more than willing to submit a bill of assurance stating that we will only put four units and no ADUs on that property. That's, I mean, I don't know, I know that those have fallen out of favor lately, but we are, we're more than happy to do so. That's, that's my comment.
Great, thank you. That's helpful. Any other comments? We, we do have a motion to approve. All right, uh, see, now I'll just give my comments. I, you know, I, I, I think if this was, this is gonna sound silly, but. If it was the, the property to the south, I think I'd be one hundred percent behind this. I'm feeling more convicted about split zoning across streets instead of across the backs of properties. Um, so I'll be voting against on this one, but with that, we'll, uh, go to the vote. Ms. Masters, if you would, please.
Johnson?
No.
Garlock?
No.
Madden?
No.
Brink?
Yes.
McGetrick?
No.
Winston?
No.
Canada?
Yes.
Uh, motion to forward fails.
All right, thank you, Ms. Masters. That concludes our new business. Do we have any, uh, announcements?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, uh, announcement that we do have subdivision committee this Thursday, July twenty-eighth. Um, the commissioners who are up to bat for that, uh, meeting, uh, you should have, uh, received a heads-up on that. But we've got, uh, Winston, McGetrick, and Holcomb.
All right, thank you so much.
Yes, this Thursday. You'll get a link, uh, the day before usually, or in the morning of.
All right, with that, I'll call this meeting adjourned. Have a great night, everybody.